All right. Sorry for the delay. Welcome to the April 8, 2025 Meeting of the Edgemont School District Board of Education. Can I have a motion to bring us back into public session? First Grace, second Nareen. First up is the approval of the minutes from our March 25, 2025 meeting. May I have a motion? First Malash, second Josephine. Do I have any questions or comments on that? Nope, all in favor? Okay, minutes are approved. We do not have a treasurer's report. This evening, I am taking the president's report out of order. I would like to address the recent discussions on class sizes and how the district determines the number of classes at each grade level at our elementary schools. Before we get into it, I would like to remind everyone that we on the board are your friends and neighbors. And all of us have children who are or were students in the district. We all have the same goal that you do of providing the best educational environment possible for all of our students. There has been a lot of community conversation over the past few weeks about how the district is increasing class sizes. But this is not true. In fact, the district is guided by agreed upon recommended thresholds that are outlined in the contract. The teachers' union, the ETA, has with the district with specific targets set for each grade. Twenty-two students per class for kindergarten through second grade. Twenty-four for grades three through six and twenty-five for the junior senior high school except for gym. Any decision to exceed those numbers is a collaborative process involving the teachers' union. These targets are within the range that is considered developmentally appropriate and instructurally effective. And they have been in place for years. The district is not suggesting increasing those targets. Instead, we are allocating class sections in a way that respects agreed upon boundaries and guidelines that are critical to ensuring equity. This issue arose recently because of the proposed size of the rising third grade at Sealy Place. This year, Sealy's second grade is three sections of sixteen students each. Next year's budget proposes to drop that down to two sections of twenty-three or twenty-four. These numbers are in line with the agreed two thresholds for grades K through two and three through six. Because the target increases slightly when moving from second grade to third grade. It is important to note that these thresholds are applied across the district. Because we need to ensure that the district is operating in an equitable manner. The district's budgets are developed through a process that involves rounds of discussion with the relevant departments. Which means that the staffing at Sealy for next year was arrived at through conversations with the building principal. And included consideration of dynamics that could impact the learning environment. We are aware that there are concerns about this decrease in sections that touch on sensitive personnel and student issues. While I am not going to address confidential matters in detail in public session, no one has been asked to leave the district. I want to make clear that this decision is not about money. But is rather in keep it about keeping in line with longstanding standards and equity across all classes at both elementary schools. In fact, Sealy already received an additional class section for the rising sixth grade. As Dr. Hamilton has explained previously, the administration continues to monitor the rising three third grade. And has the flexibility to add another section if appropriate. Another aspect of the situation that has been misunderstood is the preferred eligibility list. No one was speaking euphemistically when they said that a reduction in sections at the elementary level will resort will result in teachers going on the PEL. Nor is it just an Edgemont thing. It is how public schools in New York operate. The Office of General Counsel for NISIT, the umbrella organization for the ETA, explains it this way. If a school district abolishes one or more positions, the services of the teacher having the least seniority within the tenure area of the position abolished shall be discontinued. After a position is abolished for declining enrollment, programmatic changes, or failed budgets. The PEL provides affected teachers with certain rights or entitlements to similar positions before a new teacher can be hired. A teacher must be placed on a preferred eligibility list, PEL, and shall be recalled to such vacant positions in the order of their length of service in the system. End quote. In plain English, that means for a period of up to seven years, teachers whose positions are eliminated must be rehired by the district. When a need they are qualified to fill arises, and that includes regular substitute positions lasting at least five months. But it would not be fiscally responsible for us to keep teachers on staff when our enrollment does not call for it. Nor would it be fair to prevent highly qualified staff from being in the prime hiring season. When we are not able to guarantee a position because enrollment continues to fluctuate. It may be time to reconsider whether to adjust the target class sizes. But that is a bigger conversation that needs to take into account all the relevant factors, including enrollment, facilities, and yes, budget. To reach a decision that is both sustainable and equitable across grade levels and schools. Keep in mind, when we hire additional classroom teachers, we must also factor in if we have enough art, music, and PE teachers to cover their contractually required prep periods. No one up here is suggesting that they wouldn't like it if their kid was lucky enough to be in a smaller class. But the fact is that class sizes fluctuate from year to year, and the biggest factor in student success is their teacher quality. And I think if you give our teachers a chance, you will find they are able to handle classes of twenty-three or twenty-four students quite well, as they've done it before. At the end of the day, the district works toward creating the best learning environment for all our children. Given the many restraints that are in place when running a public school district. As I said when I started, all of us in this room share the goal of providing the best educational environment possible for all of our students. There's another open question that I would like to address tonight. The voters overwhelmingly approved the bond proposition in October. And that bond proposition explicitly included a synthetic turf field. We have issued bonds and accepted bids on bond work. The district cannot make material changes to what the voters approved. Finally, I'm excited to announce that we expect to start the conversation about projects to include improve site access in emergency situations very soon. Right now, we anticipate the first step will be a community survey, so keep an eye out for that. We appreciate your engagement and feedback on these issues, and it has been a nice change to have people at our meetings. Respectful dialogue on district matters is always welcome, but I hope I've been able to relieve some concerns this evening. With that, we move on to recognition of community.
Madam President, this evening, we have five speeches. Our first speaker is Miss Smith. This is my thank you for lunch. Everybody, I was going to speak for the budget, so when we get there, maybe then I can talk.
No, I'm sorry, that's not how the this is a budget work session where the board asks questions. So. Please, yes, while you come up, let me explain a little bit how this work. Recognition of community includes the opportunity for community members to offer their thoughts to the board. As stated in our policy thirteen sixty, we encourage public participation on school related matters at board meetings. Whether those matters are on the agenda or not. However, this is not a forum for the discussion of matters that are not school related. Also, our policy states that any group or organization wishing to address the board must identify a single spokesperson. The board can't and won't respond to any questions asked in public comment. We have a specific agenda for this meeting. If warranted, the board will follow up on issues raised during public comment outside of the meeting. Or potentially add it to a future agenda if there are relevant updates for the community. Each community member can speak for up to three minutes and public comment will last for a total of thirty minutes. Jennifer will give you a verbal warning thirty seconds before the end of your time so you can wrap up your remarks.
This is.
Of course.
This is my first time here. First, I wanted to introduce myself. My name is Eetana Smith. I have a daughter in second grade and I have a daughter who'll be joining kindergarten next year at Sealy. My background is I'm a CPA, MBA in finance. I've been doing corporate financial planning and analysis for about twenty years. So first, I wanted to offer any expertise that you will need on this budget plan. I reviewed very high level the plan that was published during the last board meeting. So please. Nareen and Heather have my information if you need to reach out. I did have a question on the accuracy of the budgets from the past three years. I can see that each year the actuals have been coming in under budget. And I was looking at certain line items, just the biggest ones that were projected for this year. It seems that their growth rate is significant compared to where the projection will be for 2024. For example. The largest one on this list here. Teaching regular school. It's projected to grow six percent, and I'd like to know what's included in this cost. Second, the largest expense here is hospital, medical, and dental insurance, which is growing. About ten percent. Thank you. Yes. You can get back to right, what's included in those line items and what's driving the growth, considering that there's discussions around. Looking at budget items and as I as I'm part of the second grade class, right, with considerations of combining into two and for next year, there's concerns on funds. So looking at some of the larger items, just trying to understand what's driving the growth, the assumptions behind those numbers. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Silverstein is our next speaker.
Hi, I'm Liz Silverstein. My my daughters are twenty-four and twenty-seven, so no longer in school, but they they did play soccer from rec all the way through to varsity. And my husband also coached soccer as well. So I understand that the budget that the bond was voted by the community. I do believe that if you went back out to the community to ask them specifically about synthetic turf. The results would not be the overwhelming yes that they were. So since August of twenty twenty-four, you have received multiple letters and a representative of my group, Keep Edgemont Green. Has utilized this public comment period at least four times, maybe more. To share the ever growing body of scientific evidence pointing to how harmful synthetic turf is to our children's health. We have offered the alternative solution of companies such as Alternative Earth Care, who have developed methods of organically maintaining natural grass fields. That can withstand constant use. Per Mr. Paul's request, we have submitted our comments and questions in writing. To all of you and the school, and I stand here now asking. When the community or why the community hasn't been provided with answers. And I saw tonight you did provide some answers to the parents concerned about class size, so I'm hoping you'll also answer some of our questions. And just to reiterate, as you know, New York State passed the carpet recycling law, making it illegal to sell synthetic turf containing PFAS in New York State. This law goes into effect at the end of twenty twenty-six, just a few months after Edgemont is scheduled to install a nonconforming baseball field containing PFAS. Last week, the New York State Senate and Assembly both introduced bills, which are an outright ban on the installation of synthetic turf playing fields. On municipal and school district property. While they haven't passed into law yet, it points to the direction the state is moving. They recognize the health hazards to our children and our environment. We understand that the current baseball field is horrific and unplayable. But there are alternatives. As I mentioned previously, Tally Town is having incredible success maintaining very beautiful. Grass baseball fields and other fields that can handle a lot, the same level of. the same level of traffic we have here in Edgemont. So once again, I will ask the following questions. One, will you share the data you looked at to determine synthetic turf is safe? Will you share that with the community? Two, have you reached out to school districts who are successfully maintaining grass fields and preparing for the bond? I'm curious if you did that. Three, did you ever get an estimate from companies that utilize updated field care methods to assess how much it would cost to renovate and maintain the baseball field? And finally, will you consider getting an estimate to assess what steps are necessary to properly maintain our other grass fields, especially Greenville and Sealy Place? Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Hamilton, members of the board. My name is Bill Foley. My wife Rebecca and I have a second grader at Sealy and a soon-to-be kindergartner at Sealy. And I am here to talk about class sizes. I know this has been a hot topic lately, so I will keep this brief. First of all, I would like to thank Dr. Hamilton for his thoughtful engagement with Edgemont parents over the last couple of weeks over email. I have no doubt that budgeting and forecasting enrollment for four different schools is a very complicated venture. And I appreciate that there are no easy solutions here. I would also like to thank Ms. Damaris, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your last name, for your comments at the front end, particularly as they relate to the district's view of class sizes and the target class sizes in the ETA contract. This was raised at the end of the last meeting. And I looked at our ETA contract. I also looked at similar contracts for other districts in Westchester County that are, that I would say are similar to ours. And those are available online as ours is. It appears that 24, at least for third grade, is not an unusual number. The ones that I looked at ranged from somewhere around 20 to 25. However, there is evidence that districts similar to Edgemont choose not to go up to those targets. And I have a few examples that we collected over the last few weeks. Midland Elementary School in Rye has four third-grade classes of 16 this year. Ridge Street School in Rybrook has four classes of 22 third graders. Bellows Elementary in Rhine Neck has six classes of third graders, ranging between 17 and 19 students. And Fox Meadow Elementary in Scarsdale has four classes of 21. So there's a bit of a range. I will admit that this data is drawn from a small sample size. We spoke to parents of third graders that we knew personally or teachers of third graders at these schools. But it does suggest that classes of 24 third graders would be a bit out of step with districts that we consider to be similar to Edgemont from an academic perspective and a resources perspective. So I think ultimately, you know, we hope that the district will do everything it can to prioritize smaller classes, class sizes in our elementary school. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, everyone. I want to first of all start off by thanking Dr. Hamilton, the board, for allowing me a minute to speak here today. Also, I want to thank the parents that are here. I want to introduce myself. My name is Francisco Padilla. My wife Deborah Padilla is in the crowd. My son Francisco is in the Sealy class, second grade, rising third graders. I'm here to talk about the rising third grade class. I'll keep this short. We appreciate the feedback that you've given to us via correspondence and, you know, the kickoff conversation today. I'm standing here today just to kind of give you additional insight on just experience that we're seeing, to share that with you, and to reiterate some of the experiences that the parents are saying here as it relates to this class sizes. You know, we're thankful to understand that, you know, the class size is not really driven by, you know, budget constraints, but decisions grounded in data and experience. Again, I want to just share some experience with you. And this being positive, I think Frankie has been involved and helpful and very excited about the ratio of the class size and not specifically using those terms, but talking about opportunities where he gets to interact with the kids in the class on a regular basis. How he talks about he gets to be class leader and assistant class leader, and I feel like those opportunities turn around more frequently because of the class size. I try to imagine right now, looking at the class of four tables of four kids apiece, adding two more tables of four kids, and just the impact that has as he develops. Again, you know, I think there's been a development that happens. I trust the teachers. I trust the system. But again, it's just, it's just trying to give some feedback on just the experience that we're having that's positive on the side and just concerns about just growing back and taking a step. Frankie came home yesterday after getting ready for bed, well, getting ready for bed and kind of said, hey, Dad, Mom, well, how does eight divide into three? It doesn't evenly, right? And we said, it's two and change, right? And he was like, okay, is it less than a fifth? I said, no, it's more, that like the change is more. And we kind of went through the cycle. We talked about, we tried to correlate to mozzarella sticks. There was a long conversation, but, you know, we tried, we tried to make it relate. I'm just worried about the teachers. We understand they're great, but there's more of the kids in the classroom. There's less mozzarella stick to go around. And, you know, I'm really thankful for the setup right now, and I just want to continue to press upon, you know, to just, you know, keeping the class size as close as where they are. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Lucas Chafi, I'm an Edgemont grad. My wife's an Edgemont grad. We have two children at Sealy. Thanks for providing the opportunity for public comment. In previous administrations, often the board would be able to respond. And, you know, that was a few years ago, and it'd be great if you could bring that back. I think that will help build trust between the board and the community. Thank you for all the details about the agreed-upon class sizes. The community has gotten really engaged on this issue, and people have started looking around and comparing ourselves to other districts. We realized that New York City class-size standards are actually better than ours in Edgemont. They updated those in 2022. I think it's time for us to do the same. When we talk with our friends at Scarsdale, we realize they offer their elementary school, both library and Spanish. Many people here don't think there's a need to cut a librarian and have the other librarian move between two elementary schools and not giving fifth and sixth graders the ability to have library also. When I lived in DC, I worked alongside the Obama administration on their Open Government Initiative. One of the big things to build trust between government and the people was open data. Sharing your data, like Mrs. Smith was analyzing the budget. There's many people, especially in New York, a lot of people have great financial knowledge. If you shared a level of detail in the budget, it would increase the trust between the public and the board. Specifically, what would be really helpful is we understand this is not a budget issue, but we also hear the words like reallocation. Well, somewhere, the money's moving from one place to another. And we do know that the central office budget has increased. But what's really hard, when you look at the budget, you can't do a comparison from one year to the other. It's not your fault. It's just that the formatting has changed from different reports. So I'd ask, in this budget season, if you could provide an easy standard to compare in detail the central office budget from 2019 to 2021, 22, 23, 24, and 25, including the number of consultants. We've heard that the central office headcount is not going to increase this year. But we also hear that there are more consultants. It's hard to understand in an apples-to-apples comparison how much the money is, how much the money is changing at central office. So if we can understand that, it will build more trust. Quickly, I'll add, I think you could layer on, before even changing class sizes, a no-cuts policy that simply says if our class sizes are above New York City standards and we have a teacher available and we have a classroom available, there'll be no cut. That doesn't take a big comprehensive reevaluation. You could try it for just one year. Those two second graders that don't know which school they're going to next year could really benefit from that kind of no-cuts policy as teachers' children, our own teachers' children. And finally, please analyze where, we have 95 students that were busing at a cost of over $1 million out of district because our schools are not meeting their needs. Please ask those families why we're not. We really need to know. Why aren't we doing that? Because all of us that can't afford private school, we're still dealing with those issues that they have left. Thank you very much.
So we are moving on to the rest of recognition of community.
Yes. Tonight, we are honored to invite Blake, who is, Blake Feinstein is a junior here at EHS. He's a member of the Model UN, and he is also a member of the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. Blake had a very unique opportunity recently, and I invited him to join us this evening to share this, what's typically a once-in-a-lifetime experience. Although given Blake's extraordinarily bright future, I would not be surprised if chatting with US presidents was a part of his regular routine. So Blake, why don't you tell us about your recent experience?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Hamilton. So at a Model UN conference in March called the National High School Model UN Conference, it's the largest Model UN conference in the country. And we had the honor to have, to see President Biden speak at that conference. He gave a one-hour speech, and it was, it was really inspiring. And essentially, they asked for questions from students to be emailed in advance. And I sent in a list of 10 questions. And they said that my questions were insightful, and I was given the amazing opportunity to have a brief meeting and a photo with President Biden. So I am really grateful to the district and the Model UN team that I got this opportunity. I can briefly say a few of the questions that I asked that got selected. At the time of the actual speech, there was, due to time constraints, he didn't actually get to answer my personal questions. But one of them was, how likely do you think it is that the China and Taiwan tensions will escalate into a military conflict? And how should the US work to prevent conflict between these nations? I also, another one I asked was, another one I asked was, throughout your career, who is your favorite world leader to meet with? Who is your least favorite world leader to meet with? These, so he didn't get the time to answer them, but they were, I'm really grateful I got the opportunity to meet him. We shook hands, and I told him it was an honor to meet him. His speech also was really inspiring. He talked about his career in public service. He talked about how rewarding it is to help people with legislation in government. And he also congratulated anyone who was at the Model UN conference, you know, on doing the work of diplomacy. He said it gave him hope for the future. And he, you know, stressed the importance of listening to the other side when you're having a debate. So it was an incredible experience for me. And again, I'm really appreciative of the Model UN team that I was able to get this opportunity to meet with them.
Great job. Thank you, Blake.
So glad you shared that with us. Thank you.
I'm not surprised that your questions were selected.
I'm not surprised he didn't share which world leader he didn't like. Probably a diplomacy problem there.
Thank you for sharing that with us, Blake. I appreciate it. And Mr. Hosier, Mr. Hosier will be coming forward at this point to share some other impressive student accolades.
Thank you, Dr. Hamilton. Blake just spoke about the National High School Model UN competition last month, and I would actually like to acknowledge several of our team members who won awards at that competition. Maribel Story and Ariel Waldman earned the Best Delegate Award. Blake Feinstein, who is here tonight, thank you for being here, and Leah Chan each received the Award of Merit. And the Edgemont delegation as a whole won the Award of Merit. Congratulations to our Model UN team and to our advisors, Ms. Sessiri and Mr. Hanson Brook. We have a number of science scholars who won awards at the 2025 WestF competition at Somers High School on March 15th, or at the New York State Science Engineering Fair on March 24th. At the New York State Science Engineering Fair, Vasu Jain, Risha Patel, and Jonathan Sanjay Cho each earned third place. Ananya Shaw received an honorable mention. At the WestF competition, Kareem Nassar earned first place. Risha Patel, Vasu Jain, and Ananya Shaw each placed second in their respective categories. Yashika Bella Subramanian, Maddie Margulis Onuma, and Daniel Kim earned third place in their categories. Rafael Saylor earned fourth place. And the following students earned additional awards in their respective areas of study. Asa Miller, Rohan Patel, Kevin Chu, Arjun Rajdev, Sedant Karthik, Rithvik Musti, Jonas M., Jonathan Sanjay Cho, Eliza Vatikalam, Juakim, Ashley Q., Leo Schwartz, Ethan Kurian, and Yashika Bella Subramanian. Congratulations to our science scholars and their science scholar's teacher, Ms. Talia Dardis. We know that Edgemont Junior Senior High School has a robust DECA club. Edgemont had 50 students compete at the New York State DECA competition in Rochester, New York. Congratulations to the following students who won awards at this competition. Students who earned first place include Abhinav Ganesh, Joseph Vatican, Sri Agarg, and Tanishi Nagaldin. Sam Meyer finished in second place. Matthew Zeitz in third place. Alyssa Ju, fourth place. Matt Lau and Brenda Roy earned fifth place. Brianna, Brian Liang, and Aditya Manjul finished in sixth place. Honorable mentions went to Anya Bagat and Zachary Phillips. And finally, the following students each won individual awards at the competition. Summer Cantano, Vasu Jain, Sanjana Denwantri, Eve Geiger, and Sophia Yagubi. Congratulations to our DECA students and their advisor, Ms. Merlini.
Thank you, Mr. Hosier.
Thank you.
So we are on to acceptance of gifts, Dr. Hamilton.
This evening, we have several gifts totaling over $18,000. The following gifts are presented for your acceptance from the Edgemont Junior Senior High School PTSA in the amount of $3,264 for the ninth-grade field trip to Boundless Adventures, and the amount of $500 from the Edgemont Junior Senior High School PTSA for the Builders Club food items for Midnight Run, from the Edgemont Elementary PTA in the amount of $2,200 to Greenville for the yoga experience at Greenville, from the Edgemont PTA in the amount of $390 to Greenville for Meet the Animals, from the Edgemont PTA in the amount of $7,200 to Sealy Place for Beyond Booksmart for their Brain Trax enrichment program, and from the Edgemont PTA in the amount of $4,500 to Sealy Place for the Creative Solutions Academy for Noise, and from the Edgemont PTA in the amount of $200 to Sealy Place for additional sessions for mobile ed.
Excellent. Do I have a motion to accept these gifts? First, Heather. Second, Ami. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Once again, $18,000 from the PTA and the PTSA. Thank you very much for your generosity. I hope people are paying attention to the wide variety of trips and programs that these gifts are going to. Our community organizations regularly provide important additional funding that enhance the experience of our students, for which we are extremely grateful. However, as I say every week or every two weeks, none of these donations would be available without the support of the community. as I say every week or every two weeks, none of these donations would be available without the support of the community. So when these organizations reach out to you, please continue to respond. Moving on, we have reports from the Policy Committee and the Curriculum Committee. Policy Committee first. Yes, Melashe is going to do that today.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So finally, we have our AI policy. First of all, I would like to thank my colleagues Grace and Amy for working on this policy. And also Amy Mosely for leading this. I would also like to thank the teachers, the student, and the community who came up for the AI panel, and also for Ken for organizing that panel, who gave us a lot of thoughts about shaping this policy. So this policy is up for the first draft. The community can still give their feedback by sending their email to policy@edgemont.org. I just want to put in two or three principles that we have followed for this policy because it's very critical in current times. The first of all, I would like to mention that the purpose of the policy is to help all students use AI, achieve educational goals, keeping the ethics, integrity, and the code of conduct which is compliant under all the others usage of technology that we use in our school district. Second point, the policy from an agency perspective is not restrictive. And what I mean to say is that it provides space and fluidity to the teachers and administrators to navigate the next step of digital fluency. So we're keeping it quite open. We're giving, empowering them to use AI to the extent that helps the student. The third is, even as we open up this AI usage in the school, we want to promote AI literacy without being punitive. And there are clauses that you'll see which promote knowledge and restorative practices, should there be such cases. The last point that I want to make is we want to strike the balance between the right use of AI and the risk that soon technology will open up. This policy will go through some changes as we go along because the things are changing at a rapid pace. This is just guardrails for setting up the usage for the teachers. And there's an ample opportunity for everyone to still give their feedback. And I'm very excited about having this policy. So this is the first read, and we'll have the second read at the next session.
Okay.
Thank you.
So what is the email address if members of the community have any questions or comments with regard to the policy?
Yeah, so the email is policy@edgemont.org. So you can still see the, send your feedback so we can incorporate those changes for the second reading.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Curriculum Committee.
Thank you. Good evening. So last week, Ami and Heather and I met with Dr. Orozco. And we've been meeting with him to get updates around the curriculum. So bear with me, we always go over time, so there's a lot to update. So as we've heard in previous discussions, our portrait of the Edgemont graduate has been developed. It's essentially a comprehensive vision that outlines the essential skills, mindsets, and competencies that we strive to cultivate in every student by graduation. These include critical thinking, collaboration, adaptability, social responsibility, among others. The portrait of the graduate isn't just a document. It's our roadmap guiding decisions and curriculum instruction and assessment to ensure that all of our students are prepared for success beyond our classrooms. So in terms of next steps, our immediate focus is on stakeholder engagement, helping our community understand what the portrait of a graduate means in practical terms. For parents, this means answering key questions. How will the portrait of a graduate shape my child's learning experience? What does problem solving look like in fifth grade versus 10th grade? And how can families reinforce these competencies at home? So to bring this vision to life, the plan is to employ a stairway strategy, which is a phased grade by grade approach to embedding the portrait of the graduate skills into daily instruction. So for example, elementary students might demonstrate communication through show and tell while high schoolers hone in this skill through formal presentations and debates. Teachers will explicitly map the portrait of the graduate competencies to their lessons and explore authentic assessments such as rubrics and student reflections to track their growth over time. This work is already underway through vertical teams that are led by Dr. Orozco. So they've had several meetings around math, science, social studies, and English teams engaging in collaborative sessions to really strengthen our curriculum coherence across the grade levels and identify and eliminate any redundancies or gaps in the learning progression. They're also aligning their instructional materials with updated standards and scope sequences. And the plan for next school year priorities include cross-grade benchmarks as well as shared resources. So other upcoming priorities will be around the summer curriculum development. Proposals are due by April 11th, which there will be a focus around artificial intelligence, the foreign language in the elementary schools, science of reading, the social studies curriculum, and STEAM. They'll also be looking at the STAR assessment data, which is the end of year results that become available in May. And these will also inform targeted adjustments to their instructional approaches. Switching over to building a positive climate across our school district, we had an update around the Speak Up initiative. So this was launched this spring with training across our staff at EHS, among students as well to address microaggressions and bullying. And so they're expanding this effort to the fifth and sixth graders. And they'll be conducting student workshops and parent resources to support those types of conversations at home. And so that's our update for now. And we'll continue to share any other further updates and progress. And please don't hesitate to reach out with any questions to any of us on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. That was plenty. I want to remind people, though, the portrait of the Edgemont graduate is what was derived from the survey that the community completed. So that is very much grounded in what the community wants to see our students learn and the skills we want them to develop. So it's an excellent effort.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Orozco. That is it for committee reports. I already gave my report. So we are on to you, the Superintendent's report, Dr. Hamilton.
Hey, well, good evening again. I will try not to be too redundant, but I'd be, would be remiss if I did not kind of respond a little bit to some of the comments our president made relative to some concerns that have been raised by our parent community. First of all, I want to acknowledge that we deeply appreciate your engagement and care for our families. And we continue to prioritize our children's educational experiences. I do want to encourage you to continue to reach out if you have a specific question rather than to get caught up into conversations that may not be rooted in fact. I have answered every email that I've received on the subject, and I will continue to answer them if you have questions or concerns, or if I need to clarify anything, I'll be glad to do so. It's important to, important to point out, as Jennifer indicated, that class size parameters currently in place are not new. There have been consistent guidelines that have helped inform our decisions regarding staffing and sectioning across all grade levels for decades. We are committed to and continuing to deeply monitor, closely monitor, and to deeply develop our teachers to ensure that our students are being supported and that we are monitoring enrollment numbers. Should the data support the need for additional sections, we are prepared to act accordingly. However, any decision to add a section cannot be made in isolation. We must take a comprehensive look across all grade levels and schools to determine where enrollment is either at or approaching suggested capacity and to ensure that there's equity across the decision and to ensure that this equitable process is sustainable regarding staff and decisions district wide. Additionally, I also want to address concerns that have surfaced regarding non-resident students. To be clear, no one has been told that they must leave the district. As always, we review our policies and enrollment practices to maintain fairness and to ensure that all students who are legally entitled to attend our schools are supported. In fact, despite the April 11th deadline, all staff members who have submitted requests have been approved. So all staff members who have students currently in our district who have submitted requests to attend in the 25, 26 school year have already been approved. We remain committed to maintaining the high standards that define our district, and we will continue to engage with our families openly and transparently as we move forward. Now, on to our budget work session this evening. Tonight's budget work session is designed specifically to give board members an opportunity to ask questions that they may have regarding the proposed budget. Now that you've had the time to thoroughly review your budget binders provided, this session gives you an open forum for clarification, discussion, and feedback. We welcome your questions and input as we work together to ensure that the budget aligns with district priorities and continues to support our students, our staff, and community in a fiscally responsible way. No formal presentation will be made this evening as the focus is entirely on discussion and addressing any specific areas where further information or explanation may be needed. So without further ado, Brian, I guess we'll just open it up to the board, or do you want to provide a preamble?
Sure. I'll make a few comments just in terms of procedures. So maybe everything Dr. Hamilton shared outlines the structure for us today. We thank you. We asked at the last meeting to share any questions that you may have that may require some research or additional documentation that may not already be in your binders. I'm happy to share, we received almost 50 questions from the board over the last two days. And we're happy to answer any of those questions tonight. And so to that end, I'm going to think a little structurally different than past years. I'm not going to do the opening monologue of 45 minutes of line by line. Instead, let your questions kind of drive the ship, and then we can backfill anything that's necessary at that point. I do want to just point out two things. So there were two questions that were asked at last board meeting that I want to kind of bring forward first so that they don't get lost and maybe think forgetting about those. Second, we have our principals, our assistant superintendents, our directors, assistant directors, and our athletic director here to answer any questions that may be pertinent to them. Dr. Hamilton and I will pass them to them where it's appropriate. What I'd ask is, once I answer the two questions from last meeting, if we could take on any athletic questions first, so then we can relieve our athletic director to go back to his other duties as well. And then we could take general questions in totality, if that's okay. So the two questions that came up at the last meeting that asked for a little research. So one was to provide a year to year look at the expenditure per student, which we show always in the, in the fall when we talk about expenditures. And so we've included that as some additional documents that I've handed out to you on the category sheet. Included in those additional documents are either replacement pages, if an error was found, or some additional conversation points for tonight that may be able to speak to some of the questions. These are budget books for the board. Deborah, do you want to?
I didn't hear the question. I said this. Yes. No. It's a budget work session for the board.
Once the budget is approved by the board, a copy goes out to the public before the vote.
Very different than this. Yeah, the, a budget book is prepared. Once the budget has been adopted by the board, it is to be made available to the public prior to the vote so that they may peruse and inform. That is not everything that's contained here. Much of this is information for the board, much of it is background information. But you're talking about 100 page document is what becomes publicly available at that time.
So can I just add, maybe just a little bit of context for you? You can consider this a board meeting that we have in public. So the meeting is a board meeting. It's almost as if we're talking to each other, but we have it in public because we're talking about non-confidential topics. But it's not really so much of a back and forth. So just if this is your first time coming, it's probably a little bit confusing. That's, maybe that, that kind of helps frame it a little bit. Okay.
Ready, proceed?
Thank you.
Okay, so if you take a look at the, the category sheet that's included with the stapled additional papers I handed out to all of you, you'll see at the bottom, we've added the in district enrollment at the time of budget development, what was proposed or what was estimated, as well as what became actualized in the subsequent year.
Sorry, Brian. Oh, is it the sheet?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. It's the one that says proposed budget summary by category. And for those who prefer the digital, I did upload it on your administrative side and board docs as well, if you'd like to look there. As you'll see in the 25, 26 school year, and we spoke to this a little bit at the last meeting, in terms of enrollment, there are three different enrollment projection numbers you'll see in the enrollment tab. One is like, what are our actualized students right now if we roll up a grade and bring in a new kindergarten? One are enrollment projections based on our demographic study performed two years ago, which we are finding tend to be about overestimated by 30 students in the last few years. And then the third being forecast five or frontline analytics approach to doing so. The triangulation of the three suggests kind of the same pattern that we would expect student enrollment to be 1,800 or lower next year. So the number I'm using here are the ones that Dr. Hamilton had provided the building principles when building section numbers to try to be consistent. So with 1,784 students projected in district and an additional 17 students projected out of district, that brings our total student population count to 1,801, which leads us to an expenditure per student of just over $41,000. You'll note that that's almost a 7% increase on last year. And if you follow suit, we kind of remained in the high 30s for several years. The phenomenon is far more related to the student count than it is to the budget because our budget is not growing at that same rate. And I think maybe analogy to equate to this, there are several expenses in the district that are not student dependent. One being facility costs, so our capital budget really has very little to do with student count currently. When we present the budget in three parts, the administrative count does have some connection to students. However, there are several carrying costs that are present regardless of the size. As an example, at the elementary school, we need to have a building principal. Building principals expenses shared across a smaller number of students leads to a higher per pupil expenditure. And so unfortunately, you know, a reduction in student enrollment is not a one-to-one correspondence and a reduction in expenditure per student. Any questions on that front?
So, yep, so my quick question is, given that the enrollment numbers have been coming down, should there be an increase in enrollment compared to a forecast? Is it fair to say that there wouldn't be any material changes in our budget because it wasn't a step function on the way down, it wouldn't be a step function on the way up?
You speak to next year or in subsequent years?
Yeah, next year, yeah. Next year or subsequent years, yeah.
So I'll answer both. I think when we build the budget, we hope to be able to have funds necessary to address certain contingent or emergent expenses. One example would be obviously the cost of teachers. And so when we presented the personnel budget, we spoke to the fact that at that time, there were two contingent teacher salaries and their benefits built into the budget. Since that time, Sealy Place has been granted one additional section. We have not changed the budget from there. So we have one contingent position embedded in the budget currently. There are other areas of contingency, most notably in the PPS budget as it relates to tuition expenses and related service expenses for out of district placements for students. When you look at the totality of contingencies, you know, you'll see from the expenditures to budget ratios each year, they don't always come due. In fact, it's very unlikely that all of the contingencies will come due in one year. So there are funds available there to be reallocated in that way if necessary. I think secondary point is that we have other reserves that can assist us in situations like that and areas of fund balance. So one would be, school districts are permitted to maintain a unrestricted fund balance of 4% of the annual budget. In reality, that, that bucket of money is intended to be an emergency fund if necessary. Although districts really try to protect that because it is a strong indicator of of fiscal planning and can directly relate to the credit rating of a district, that is certainly there and available for us. Additionally, we have funds in our tertiary reserve, and we know based on board action recently, we've approved a few settlements that are going to significantly reduce our obligation or our liability. Those settlements won't come due until next year. But when they do, it is going to provide an opportunity for the tertiary committee to look at the remaining fund balance and determine whether we should be reducing our actual holdings in that. And in doing so, returning it to the general fund. And so there are mechanisms to be able to support emerging needing, emerging needs throughout the year. And I would say that that carries forward for subsequent years as well. Any other questions on the expenditure per pupil? Okay, so the second question that was, it was to perform a kind of an analysis of what are, within the budget, what are one-time costs? So things that are really, they're in this budget. And what are things that carry forward in subsequent years and are really evident in every budget that we look for? So we did ask all the building principals and department chairs to do an analysis, and I'll be very upfront, it's a rough analysis. The mindset or the task I gave them was, you're not to try to find what will replace these one-time costs in the future because there may be new one-time costs in the next budget. But to specifically look at this budget and say, what's something that we plan to purchase, whether it be a commodity or a service, that is not currently on the radar to continue forward? Areas like professional development, conference attendance. I asked some I ask them treat that as something that is stable unless there seems to be some dramatic change in what next year's budget would present. That's something that we typically do include each year. Contained in your packets, there is a very short analysis of it that summarizes it. And this would be the new information that I provided today. If I can find mine. We've kind of broke it down by departments, but talking in larger summary. We identified one point six million dollars of commodity services, purchases. Salaries that may be one-time cost expenditures of the total seventy-three point nine million dollars. So about two point two percent. And this kind of goes back to a former board member, Al Clark's approach of thinking like, what are the things that are recurring expenses every year that we? Are either contractually mandated or or are likely to occur versus what do we have some flexibility on? This activity is actually very helpful for us. As you may recall, and for those who are new, maybe new to you. We are required to present two budgets. So at the April twenty-second board meeting, when seeking budget adoption, we'll be presenting a budget and a contingency budget. The contingency budget is is to be generated by identifying the areas upon which we would not include. If we were to fail the budget vote two consecutive times. By state law, the contingency budget would then automatically take precedent. There are some very specific parameters. For example, you can't buy new equipment under a contingency budget. You can't increase expenses related to the administrative budget, that whole bucket. Beyond what was paid for in the previous year. But more importantly, you're supposed to look line by line and say, okay. What is necessary, hundred percent necessary? Like, we cannot continue to operate this school district. Absent these expenses and to pull out those individual parts. So I will be performing that analysis and working with the finance committee to generate a contingency budget. That this task itself does kind of play into. So many of those same expenses would not be seen as a one-time cost. Most of these are equipment items, one-time participation in a conference. Additional certifications necessary to enhance programs, things like that that we would not include in the contingency budget itself.
Thank you. So originally, the plan had just been to go in order of seniority. And people hold the floor until they've asked all their questions, but in. In respect of Mr. De Rosa's time, I don't know people's questions. So I will go up the line and ask if anyone had specifically athletic. Questions and then we will. Okay, so I'll start. Did you?
I did.
Well, I'm going.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. We don't normally do it this way. Ami, did you? Heather, you said you did?
Yeah, so Brian, I was hoping you could just talk to the busing for athletics after school. So. Students that have to be. Taken by their parents or whoever to another location to practice or or play sports.
Sure. So Anthony, my coming down to the mic, I'll start it off and I think. So I'd ask kind of follow-up question to you in this as well to think about, are there specific sports or programs? And then with additional conversations with Anthony, we identified that broadly speaking. The school district does not bus for athletic events that occur at what we would determine to be the home site. Now, the home site for most of our athletics is on our free campuses, but for some, it may be a town park, tennis. It may be the Ardsley High School Swimming Pool. They're in the broader Greenberg Community Collection of of the town of Greenberg. So that has been the the general approach. Anthony, you want to give some color to the past analysis that's been done?
This topic came up of. Probably five or six years ago. Parents inquired why we did bus back and forth. Does it does a couple of challenges? First of all, I'll speak in terms of budgetary reasons. In this year's budget, we're budgeting for four hundred and twenty-six trips, which are all of our away games, including sectionals. If we added shuttle buses to all of the sites that. That we have that are offsite facilities, that would be another four hundred and thirty-two trips that we'd have to add to the budget. So two hundred and forty-two plus thousand dollars would approach five hundred thousand dollars. Budget aside, we wouldn't be able to get buses. Right now, our the bus company that we're that we use, there's a bus driver shortage everywhere and that's that's. Not uncommon to other school districts, but our our bus company has had problems. Filling driver positions. They have buses. They just don't have the drivers, which means that their their daily school trips. Taking kids from school to home run longer. We used to get buses at three fifteen to three thirty. We're not getting buses till four o'clock now. We're we wouldn't even be guaranteed to get buses to shuttle kids back and forth between these sites.
Thank you. And I think in the order of magnitude, that ultimately is the larger constraint than it is the financial aspect of that.
Correct.
That whether or not we wanted to allocate the funds, we don't have a mechanism for being able to. Double the routes as it currently stands with what's offered to us.
The four hundred number that you gave, does that that number doesn't include every single practice, right? So if we were looking at every single practice, it would be significantly higher.
Correct. So that four thirty-two would be every single practice going to all the different sites, shuttling. Shuttling kids to Greenville and then our other offsites, Ardsley Middle School, the Town Park, et cetera.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You good?
Yep.
All right. You said you, Nareen, you had.
Yeah, one quick question. So Anthony. Help me understand, would it be feasible to extend modified sports to the sixth grade? If so. Like, how much would that sort of enhance the your budget for the year?
So in in terms of the budget, if we were to incorporate six sixth graders into our modified programs. As they currently stand, there would really be no budgetary impact. The problem that we have is New York State Public High School Athletic Association only recognizes seventh, eighth and ninth graders for modified sports.
So even across other.
Seven through twelve is the is the grades that are eligible for interscholastic athletics.
Okay. Because because typically middle school is sixth to eighth grade, right? So wouldn't there necessarily?
It could be fifth to eighth grade. It could be sixth to ninth grade, depending how some schools are structured. But as far as New York State Public High School Athletic Association goes for interscholastic sports, it's seven through twelve. And modifies is designated as seven, eight and nine.
Could they at least participate in the at the practice level? Have that exposure to the coaches?
They they wouldn't be able to.
They wouldn't be. Okay, thank you. Do you have anything for? I don't know.
I have a follow-up question on what question Heather raised is. So are there any equity issues that we might have seen around parents kind of complaining about? Busing the students to different campuses or Green Book and have you kind of any kind of thought process on having heard anything? Like, is there a careful issue that can be addressed for the budget that should be addressed? Anything around that?
Could you explain equity a little bit?
Yeah, so equity means if a parent is working and he or she cannot bus the student to the to the campus because of their absence. Facility, it becomes like a an issue where purely because we don't have services. So I'm just trying to grapple some numbers in context of what.
Yeah, it I mean, that that's something that has not come up often. There's been a couple of times over the years where parents. Might say that they they would have trouble getting their kids over and we suggest, you know, a carpool situation. With other parents that might be able to transport the child over there. In terms of of what sports that we we place in those locations. Will place them equally in terms of a boy sport or a girl's sport. So at Greenville, this spring season, we have. Boys and girls will cross over there and then we have softball and baseball over at Sealy. So everything is equitable in in that respect. And then sometimes we make decisions. We used to have soccer here on site. Soccer has such robust numbers. And field hockey was struggling with numbers a little bit. We tried to make it easier for those families and we we moved field hockey over. Modified field hockey over to here to play them on first field, which has helped keep that program going.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have any athletics questions, so thank you for your time, but.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
Okay, so like I said, I'm just gonna. Work my way through the board. Each person's gonna hold the floor until they're done with their questions. Rather try and chop it up. And then if anything comes up in the course, we'll have a, you know, follow-up round.
Perfect.
So Josephine drew the long straw.
The long or short straw, unclear. Yeah, I have, I'm not the only one with a number of questions. The number fifty is certainly not all mine. But this is my first budget season and I think a lot of my questions have to do more with process than they do with necessarily the materiality of the item.
Perfect.
So I'm not trying to be petty on any of the things that I'm asking about, but just to clarify how it works. For my own understanding, but starting at a very high level, there were a couple of state level issues that. I was wondering how they would affect us. So we've talked before that only about one percent of our budget comes directly from from federal aid. But about ten percent comes from state aid. And I am wondering how if the elimination of the Department of Education is completed as it's been announced that it will be. How does that tie to how funds come back come back to the states from the federal government? And how that would ultimately affect state aid, aside from what, you know, is direct federal.
A great question. And if I don't say great question, that doesn't mean there wasn't a great question, but it's a little tick that'll happen here. So.
We do pay attention to.
Yes. I'll let you know if it's not a great question. So super timely, obviously on our radar as well. And at the finance committee level, we've had conversations around this. In terms of what should the district do to protect themselves? So broadly speaking, six percent of the New York State budget comes from federal aid. So how it then is a portion to districts is based on their own formulas, but I think a logical conclusion could be drawn. If New York State is to receive six percent less or have six percent less to. Provide districts, they are likely to provide less to those districts. How and in what programs they may resolve, whether it be embedded in new foundation aid formulas. Or otherwise, and in fact, we have evidence of years where they said, we're not going to honor the formula. We're just gonna reduce it. That that's the concern. I think that at the state level, they are are fearful of. The obvious trickle-down effect does and will have an effect on us if state level funding is reduced. I think if you were to couple that with our own federal grants that we receive. Primarily are six eleven and six nineteen IDEA grants, which are special education related grants. That are primarily, well, they are not primary. They are specifically targeted for high excess cost special education placements. So the cost of of providing services in the special education settings that are above and beyond what would be the the typical. Cost of doing so. At the finance committee level, we've discussed that four percent unrestricted fund balance holding. That we are permitted by New York State statute to hold. And we will make the recommendation, and I believe it is echoed by the finance committee, that we actually should hold. Four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars above that at year's end. We received four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in IDEA six eleven and six nineteen grants this year. We don't budget for those things. So when you look at the budget, the general fund does not account for the expenditures that we plan to charge to those grants. So if we were to receive no six eleven and six nineteen grant funding, we don't have a source to backfill that in the budget. So it would be our recommendation to hold those funds in excess of the four percent. In unrestricted fund balance so that if federal funding was reduced for us. We would be able to pull that in to support those programs. We've spoken to our external auditor just to discuss that process. And they've given kind of the verbal go-ahead of, provided that you tie that additional holding to a specified purpose. As we would be doing, they are comfortable giving the green light for the district to do so. We did this as recently as two years ago, when the state said we may have to withhold or reduce the foundation aid. And so we held the exact dollar that they told us they may withhold. It never materialized. And subsequently, we had to appropriate that extra balance to the next year's budget. So it gets used to offset the future years tax impact. Protections for us in terms of long term from the state, we don't have. A great picture of what will happen. I think as we've shared, I'm very happy to know that the governor proposed a two percent increase on foundation aid. And both the one-house budgets have sought actually higher increases to that. But what it looks like in two years or three years, I think is just as wishy-washy as it's been over the last three where we've seen relative spikes. And so I think that more likely than not, we're going to see it embedded in however foundation aid looks for us in twenty-six, seven, twenty-seven, eight and going forward.
Thank you. That's very helpful, especially the the six percent number is one that I I didn't have. So that's that's super helpful. Another state level question, there's another bill pending the universal access to school meals. Does that affect us at all? I know we're not currently receiving any. Money for school meals, but is that something that's a possibility in the future?
Yeah, so as part of the governor's proposal is to create universal access for meals. The way it's presented is as though to all students in New York State. As it currently stands, there's a community eligibility provision, I believe that's the part CEP. Which targets low wealth districts to ensure that if they qualify. Based on a predetermined percentage of the population that meets the free and or reduced priced lunch metric. Then every student in that school would get free lunch subsidized by the USDA. So really federal government again, yeah. The governor's proposal is to extend that to all of the schools who did not meet that benchmark. Which we would certainly be a part of because our free and reduced price lunch is actually very low percentage. To then say, okay, for all of those other schools, we can will provide the financial support. Edgemont is not a part of the National School Lunch Program, and this is only available to schools that are a part of that. That's a USDA program. There are many other peer districts in the area that are also not a part of the National School Lunch Program. Not surprisingly, they tend to be some of our peers that we look at from a socioeconomic as well as programmatic standpoint. They've making the decision over the years to not participate. If Edgemont wanted to be a recipient of those funds, if it was approved as as part of the legislative budget. We would have to join the National School Lunch Program. To do so would would make a very radical change to the way that we deliver food services and what we can serve students. The cafeteria meals would not look similar. It would be vastly different. They're kind of prescribed menus and meals. Ordered through the USDA. And I would, my recommendation would be this, without putting any. Opinion in either option. If we were to make a decision or want to explore the feasibility of joining the National School Lunch Program, I I would recommend that we get a large stakeholder group together. And it takes some real time to explore, what does that look like? What would the effect be? It's I I wouldn't recommend that we we even attempt to do so in a short order to to look at next year. I would look at.
Not suggesting. So I was just curious because it looked like a statewide measure and.
Correct.
Yeah.
And and that that is how it will be positioned in newspapers as well, and it will be seen, not dissimilar from universal pre-K funding. Where there's a opportunity, but feasibility or response may not actually work for that in the ways that are best.
Okay, let me see where I'm keeping it relatively on the higher level, BOCs. I'll admit, I haven't asked as many questions about BOCs as I probably should have, and now that's catching up with me because I find some of their materials in the budget confusing. I understand that there's some shared services, we pay a member fee. But can you talk a little bit about what exactly BOCs provides for us and, you know, what what we're what we're paying for, so to speak?
Yes. So you have a great resource to to individuals down as well who's been on the BOCs board. I'm sure could share a different level of of insight from a different perspective, but. Southern Westchester BOCs, we are a component district member of the Southern Westchester BOCs. BOCs are Boards of Cooperative Educational Services. I forget how many there are in New York State, unless you have to do now. Okay. And broadly, they serve a region of the state. Their their purpose or their charge is to be able to provide cooperative services, whether they be special education services. In some areas, transportation services or any purchased service that could provide school districts with purchasing power. Because we're doing it as a large. Because we're doing it as a larger group than would be afforded if you were doing it on your own. The contained within your binder is a whole tab on BOSEs, and in there is a budget presentation that the Assistant Superintendent for Business of Southern Westchester BOSEs presented to each of us as school business officials. That is their proposed budget, which will require board action on our end to take a vote, to cast a vote in it as a component district. Embedded in there and kind of specific to your, one of your questions was about the retirees that they mentioned and carrying costs associated with that. They're speaking specifically to their employees that they had employed, who have now retired from Southern Westchester BOSEs, who they now have post employment benefit costs.
And and most of those are special education teachers?
Could be.
Admin staff?
Could be that as well.
Of that.
Yeah. In a lot of cases.
Massive number compared to their overall budget.
For right for the business office, we have, there are tremendous amount of supports. We provide BOSE services, they give us support in our envision programming, which is our database. In the purchasing departments, there are several employees, clerical, teaching staff, administrative staff that are within there. So I know let's just hand go up, so.
Yeah, so I I'll just clarify, so when you look at the the retiree health insurance number, which looks very high in context of administrative budget is because every expenditure related to all the employees of Southern Westchester BOSEs is included as a part of administrative budget. So it's it looks large in administration, but it's like, it's a smaller part of the overall. So the total budget of Southern Westchester BOSEs are all two hundred and ten million dollars. So you should see in that context. Two, special education is just one part, they also offer vocational trade school services. English as language for new immigrant students. You have kind of section one sports, which is done by them, you have media consultants, you have Lyric, which offers the information center, so that's a whole lot of employees that come to us.
Thank you, and I would just add to that, so when we think of what's our responsibility? So they, we're responsible for two, two parts of the BOSEs budget. So we pay a portion, a prorated portion of their administrative and their capital expenses. And those expenses for us next year are two hundred and ninety two thousand four seventy six and fifty nine thousand five fifty seven. Our proportion, the percentage share that we pay is based on, it's called ARWADA, which is the resident weighted average daily attendance. So every school district has a metric and they use that as the way of saying, it's basically enrollment based, right? You know, based on the size of your school to the whole pot, that's the percentage that you pay. So we are in our budget this year, we have three hundred and forty thousand dollars assigned. And that is prescribed to us by the BOSEs budget, if theirs is approved, then these are the expenses we must pay.
All right, I'm gonna get into some specifics. The Greenville librarian position would be eliminated in favor for the Spanish program for the fifth and sixth grade. Would this, would the, is the librarian qualified to teach the language? Or would we be terminating the librarian?
So I'm gonna, without us going into exact, I'll keep it away from specific.
Slates to the budget line item.
Understood.
Like, is that position?
So I'll say this, so I think the, if you take two things in connection with each other.
Yeah.
The allocation of library services across fifth and sixth grade and the creation of the FLESS program, there is no net cost increase in of our staffing to accomplish that.
Right, okay, that's helpful. We're projecting significantly lower custodian costs for the high school next year, can you give a little color on that? Because it just seems, most things go up every year and that, I'm just curious how we're achieving that.
Yeah, so I think there's a handful of areas that you'll see reallocations to more appropriate places. So this one is actually very easy to speak to, I don't know why. When it was originated, certain employees were put in this bucket as opposed to another, but it just carried forward forever. We finally ripped the Band-Aid off and said, this isn't right, we gotta fix it. So specifically there, there were two individuals that have the title of maintenance. It's maintenance slash and then something else for each of them. Who are really district level employees, they provide maintenance services across all three campuses. They've always been charged to the EHS custodial line, it is my guess that's because their home base is here. And we do everything by like location code, so oh one is the high school, and so they were put under an oh one code. But in reality, they provide district level services at all buildings, so we've reallocated that, we've moved those. If you take a look at the district wide maintenance line, you'll see also a very similar increase on theirs that offsets the decrease there. There are no reduction in that whole unit, we're maintaining the same FTEs.
I wouldn't have thought so, so that's a logical answer. And just a point of clarification, am I correct that, so it looks like we're re categorizing things from equipment to supplies under some new guidelines for what is equipment? Is that correct? I just see just big swings in both of those categories across all three schools.
Hundred percent, yes, so that is directly tied to board action. So earlier this year, the board, upon the request and recommendation, changed our purchasing policy. We made some updates to that and our fixed assets policy. In combination, what the end result is, is that we've chained, we used to tag, put an asset tag on all items we need to be equipment that were two hundred and fifty dollars or more. We, one year increased it to five hundred and we've subsequently increased it to a thousand to be more in line with what other public institutions and local school districts are doing. In connection with that, it is best practice for us to include the equipment items that are are to be tracked as fixed assets as equipment. So there should be a one to one correspondence that every item purchased that is a fixed asset should be in an equipment line, a two hundred object code. And then our treasurer reconciles on a monthly basis that every purchase that was made under the two hundred codes wasn't properly asset tagged. And if there are any misappropriated expenditures, reclassify that to a different line, like supplies. So the charge to our budget builders this year was to identify items that would comply with the new policy and only put those in the equipment line. Anything else could be determined to be a supply now going forward. I did put some numbers together for you to combine the two, if you look at all of our equipment lines, plus all of our supply lines, our budget in the current year is about one point four million. The budget for next year is one point three three million. So we're actually seeing a slight decrease in the overall expenditure across those two lines together. Much of that is is equipment as well. Under the old lens.
Thank you. Workers' compensation. I found this a little bit confusing, so it looks like this year we're coming in under budget on workers' compensation, but it looks like each year the contribution is set in advance. So how would we come in under budget? I guess that's my question.
Again, another great question, I'm gonna miss that tip again. So we are a part of the Southern Westchester Consortium. It's a Southern Westchester Schools Cooperative Workers' Compensation Self-Inured Plan. I don't even know what that acronym is when we lay it out. So they engage as a consortium, they engage an actuary to perform an analysis on the ongoings of payments paid out, what was being received. And based on that, in January, they hold a meeting and they provide for us those planned expenditures per budget. They're just estimations based on what was gathered at that time, so that we can all build a budget accordingly. It is true, our total cost, I don't know what the difference was. I assume it's probably not huge.
On a percentage basis, it was not insignificant, but in a dollar basis, it's not.
Okay. The, it comes in as what's real, so they they base our own individual contributions, both on the health of the whole plan, what use of fund balance they may be using to offset expenditures, and then also claim rates for the district. And so.
For our districts.
For every district individually, yeah, gets measured into what the overall cost will be in that case. In addition, on that line, aside from just the plan costs, we do have expenses associated with workers' compensation that may come due through separate invoices as a result of payments outstanding or administrative costs otherwise.
Do we pay that in at the beginning of the year, or do we pay it as the expenses arise?
Generally, the consortium expenses come to us in one bill.
Yeah.
I would, I wanna, I think right around the fall, so probably around September. And then we do have additional costs low and small relative to the budget that do come through on that line throughout the year.
One big area where lane changes, so lane changes are, from what I understand, teacher promotions and seniority payments and things of that nature. We used almost none of that budget this year, but it looks like we rolled that over to next year. Does that, were there things that were going to happen this year but haven't, and they're going to just happen next year? Can you give me a little bit more clarity around?
Sure, so let me actually look at the I'll provide some context as I look, so yes, the the line that's called lane changes in additional appointments was created, I believe, three years ago at my request. Prior to that, what we did is there are upwards of twenty different lines that teachers are paid on. Whether it be special education, general education, counselors, psychologists. What was done in the past is estimations were made of individual X within that line may go up, so let's add some extra money in that line to cover those lane changes. Because of the way that I think of it, I prefer the pot of money to be generated based on what trends would suggest. And then once the year commences and we take board action to apply those lane changes or assign additional appointments based on contracts, to then transfer the funds from that line to the individual budget line, so then now the expense is tied to the appointment. The reason for the increase, I'll speak to first, is that last year, the only things that we kept in there were the lane changes. Additional appointments for those who meet contractual obligations for like teaching five periods in a row, or have not having a prep on a day, these are contractual obligations. I took the whole bucket this year and said, okay, overages, we don't necessarily know if there's an overage that generates at the high school level, which individual teacher is going to be assigned that overage. And so we put the overage estimations in that bucket as well. We put the senior options mentor payments in that bucket as well. Anything that we couldn't tie to an individual, we put in the broad bucket that we will then distribute to those lines. To speak to your point of expenditures, I just want to look at the line by line. So one of two things has happened, so I would assume. So let's, let's say an individual budget line had a contingent teacher salary embedded in it. That teacher salary didn't come due, we didn't apply, didn't need the contingency. There may have already been a surplus on that budget line. So when individuals were then appointed a lane change, we didn't need to transfer funds there because there was already funds existing. That could be one reason.
So normally, all of the money in that category gets shifted to other lines through budget transfers.
If there was a, if there was a deficit on any of the lines, we would do so.
It looks like its own item and there are expenses under that, so.
That's correct, so in in some instances, like senior options mentor payments, we tend to just pay it out of that line rather than put it on a line and do so. But when, if you were to think of it as it is the line that will support all of the appointments that will be made at the board level early in the year, either through redistribution, budget transfers, or direct assignment within there. So those funds that are in there are probably very close to actually fully realized this year, and they either moved via budget transfer, so you may not see an expense, but you might see a reduction via transfer, or the line already had a surplus, and so we didn't need to move anything.
That's very helpful. So just on the process level, so I think it's a common, maybe misconception about budgets that you, you know, you take last year's number and you put the inflation rate on top of it or look at your contracts and things and you get the new number, but, so for instance, field trips. We went over budget this year on field trips, but we're budgeting less for next year. Is that just because of the actual requests that were put in by specific departments?
So.
Yeah, like, not a dollar question, it's a process question.
Great, because this board has tremendous influence and action on this, actually. So you think of all the gifts we accepted this evening. Every evening, we've been so fortunate that we sit here, we have thousands of dollars of gifts that come in from various organizations. But the vast majority of that money has often come from the PTA and PTSA. More often than not, those gifts are directly tied to some sort of experiential event. Bringing a consultant in, going on a field trip, transportation expenses. So the expenditures being greater than what was budgeted is offset by the gifts that have been received that are being deposited into what we call our TE account. And if we were to look at the expenditures in the TE accounts and match it up to that, you would find that the total expense in what was received, whether it be from general fund revenues or these gifts and donations do match. Consistently, we've asked building principals to identify what are the, what components of the curriculum are you allocating funds for, for field trips and transportation? And they have embedded, the budget they presented to you, are the funds associated with specific trips that they have targeted for grade levels inclusive of their transportation? And the other stuff is all kind of originating in another way as well.
Right, because we can't count anticipated gifts if they're not contractually promised, right?
Correct, nor do we know that the expense will ever come due, right? If the gift doesn't come, may we choose not to do that experience, highly probable.
Or anything else, I think. I think I'm good for now, thank you very much. Sorry to take up so much time, hopefully to have everybody else have less.
No, that's, that's the whole, the whole point for this evening, it's especially useful for people going through the first time, so.
Well, I learned a lot.
Good. I'm a hero.
Thank you. So just for starters, I know that each sort of department came up and shared with us their priorities. But if you had to really summarize and very briefly what the key priorities are for this next budget, what do you think are like the top two or three things?
Ken, do you wanna tackle that?
Yeah, there are a couple of things that I think kind of come up, rise above others, and that is the implementation of the science of reading. The successful implementation of our language program at the elementary level. The continued implementation of the MAP program method focus in terms of implementation with fidelity. Professional development for staff, teachers and administrators. Excuse me, and facilities. Moving forward with bond initiatives and then those capital improvement projects that we were able to capture in the total operating budget.
Thank you. And then what, what portion of the budget, I was trying to kind of think about, like, how much are we spending on instruction, like directly kids are actually, you know, benefiting from that versus how much we we spend, like, what are the costs for non instructional?
Sure, so two, right, so there's two approaches we could take, I'm gonna do the high level approach, and if need be, we'll drill down for you, it would require more time. As we shared at our last board meeting, we're required to actually present this in part of the budget book that will be out publicly is has to be presented in three parts, administrative, capital and program. By definition, the program are the expenses associated with the direct instruction of students, the supports, the materials, everything that is student contact, essentially. It's a little overly simplistic, maybe to what your question asks, because there may be some costs that are embedded in capital and 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 administrative budget that we might say or have a direct hand in in some of those things, but broadly speaking, that's the best way to look at it. If I look, if anyone who wants to follow with me, I'm gonna look back on the presentation from the last meeting. And there was a slide in there that kind of spoke to the breakdown. Yeah, it should be in the presentation section, and then I would assume it to be the last item in there, it was the twenty five, twenty six budget administrative proposal. And I'm looking at slide eleven, which is the three part budget. Yeah, you got it right there.
Okay. Got it.
So as you, as you're searching, I'll kind of read here, so it says, the program by state definition, these are costs related to direct instruction, services to students, including teacher salaries, classroom materials, transportation, athletics, extracurriculars and support services, to name something, I'm sure we can find more. So in the proposed budget, fifty four point five million dollars of the seventy three point nine million dollars is targeted directly to that. I did look, I believe that's seventy four percent of the overall budget. The remaining two parts, administrative at nine million and capital at ten point three million, represent twelve and fourteen percent respectively. So think of it as about three quarters of the overall budget is tied directly to that. And if there's a deeper dive needed, we certainly can try to.
Oh, that's great.
Pick away.
And then I noticed that Sealy's proposing a thirty percent increase in their budget from last year, and Greenville's asking for a seventeen percent increase. I was wondering. Um, I was wondering about that difference when the priorities that were outlined were the same.
Certainly, it's a great opportunity, Nate's here, Nate Peterson, our assistant principal at Sealy Place, and Marisa Farrar from Greenville are here. Um, I'll pass that question to the two of you.
Hey, good evening. Um. I was just about to say, that's a great question. Sorry, um. We did a line-by-line analysis of our budgets, and this was sort of after, you know, really considering that our, and I don't stand in front of you, Nate, that our priorities are the same, strengthening our literacy and our math. Um, really looking at professional development for our faculty and staff and thinking about the whole child and creating opportunities that are similar at both schools. And when we did that line-by-line analysis, things like our textbook line and what we plan to support the science of reading, what we are um planning to purchase for our math and focus program, our field experience, opportunities for our students are um very similar as are the PD opportunities we plan. So all of those big priorities that Dr. Hamilton talked about, our budgets are very, very similar. Where we do find some differences is when we did our very comprehensive inventory, it was necessary to order some things at um Sealy that weren't necessary at Greenville, and those varied in prices. And then we looked at other items that sort of came to the end of their lifecycle that we had to purchase, um whether because we needed, you know, some things were sort of beyond our level of repair or things that we just needed updated materials for, and that's where the material difference came from. But what is provided for the students instructionally, um both for academics and social emotional growth are, and opportunities for teachers and students are the same between both buildings, despite the difference in the increase.
You took up the entirety of our answer, thank you. Now, but what, what you actually heard come, come from Marisa was a lot about alignment, and that was the purpose and the goal of what, what we did as we did that line-by-line analysis was to really make sure that our two buildings were aligned in the opportunities that we provide our students.
Okay, so it's really like inventory and supplies, like what you guys need, okay?
And I'll just add one other thing, when we think about its budget increases as well, then uh that has to take into account what was allocated last year.
Yeah.
And their allocations may have also been um discrepant at that time for whatever reasons. And for some reason in my mind, I'm thinking about the purchasing of new cafeteria tables at Greenville that may have led to additional expenses on one side, which would have maybe shown a smaller increase this year, um budget to budget as well.
Okay, that makes sense. Um, and then for the elementary school. Um. I know, I don't know, um, this might be a Dr. Roscoe question, but I noticed that um you know, the significant investment in science of reading, like Dr. Hamilton just said, I'm wondering if there's any data we have to kind of better understand how the science of reading will impact student performance, like how are students performing now in literacy, what percentage of classrooms already have libraries, what percentage of kids are currently receiving targeted intervention, what will this look like at the high school?
So those are all very good questions, and I think that goes actually through, we require a little more data in terms of like the overall perspective. I think the biggest difference in terms of the increase, and I also wanted to allude to a little of the fact that you asked earlier, what, why are we getting, what are we asking at the elementary level and at the group level as well? And I think that the biggest difference is uh in terms of, like they mentioned, right, there's materials that are specific to each, each building. And there in general, uh as you know, we started with the initiative in terms of like really having a literacy committee in Texas, looking very closely, it's actually like they might have materials, for instance, they might have the quarterable before, right? Uh, now, but can we guarantee that with our line in terms of this, I agree? That, I mean, I'm not shocked, you know what I mean? So like, one of the reasons why we're exploring really, really in depth is because we, it's actually, I wrote props to the meetings. This week, actually, we just got uh our uh literacy at the station, which is basically uh an innocent survey that the state of New York is requiring us, all, all districts to really um submit by the beginning of the year, and it's really, basically, this is saying, are you ensuring that from K to third grade, which we know is like the basic the age of words since I learned to read? Uh, basically saying that we are learning all of our practices to uh science of reading, to like the body of work that's known as science of reading in terms of every materials, every paragraph, and then if not, what is it? So I think in that regard, I think that some of the budget that you see included in, in the uh group of the offices, like I want to make sure they have what they need, but we don't know what someone who gas might, might find in terms of like all materials or in terms of uh all some of the processes, so in addition to professional development, so for instance, we know that we need to do a specific uh professional training in terms of like uh tier intervention, for instance, to your, to your appointment of the data where we are. And we actually started looking at some of the analysis, such as the tier intervention, uh and where we are. We just did, or not just did, but we'd have the middle of the year assessment, and you know, looking at that specific data, we can see that, you know, it grows every year, it grows, and we're in a very good shape, it can be more specifics, uh, uh, the decision we want, but you know, in K one, we need to ensure that those, that the level of, of um instruction is completely at one hundred percent aligned, so that's, that's the work. And I think uh in terms of uh libraries, so again, there's a heavy investment. The investment has been there, but I think there's even more that needs to be done in terms of like really assuring, especially because now they're like, you have, you know, until the end of this year, like we have to guarantee that we have a plan. If we don't have something that's aligned, we have to provide a plan of how we're going to align everything uh to the project uh work. Um, and in terms of uh the seven to twelve level, um we are, we actually include, I mean, one of the vertical, and we talked a little bit about that, is that, you know, we are constantly having them understand, like having that vertical alignment, like where are they coming from, where uh what are the needs and what are the shift that we need to make? Now, one of the, the biggest, uh, I guess, leading in terms of this new model of research, like, you know, they are making sure that we understand that this is not just elementary, this really needs to carry throughout. And some of it, almost like uh making a new awareness in terms of like uh organization standards of having here for a little while, but really making sure that we just have ownership of all that process. So we are providing training for the English department. And.
I want to, I want to kind of piggyback on something on the accent that was relative, and the principals actually could probably speak to, not to put you on the spot, but I know you know it, um, the students who are receiving interventions, um rough percentage of students, particularly those students who were part of your managing for results process uh in September, and where they are now relative to knowing the way of that number. But the biggest gap we have is in the area of writing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think one of the, the things that our seven through nine English teachers will say is one of the areas that we need to devote more time to is in the area of writing, willingsy, um and helping our students understand how to be proficient writers. Um, and I know that's one of the, that's part of what we've been focusing on at the elementary level, it's based on that, that feedback, and the data actually supports that. Um, so you know off the top where you are germane to that?
Refusing to support, uh, reading or receiving tier reading support. Um, and the work that we're doing to science of reading, as Dr. Hamilton points out, she helps the students decode and reading the words and encoding writing the sense. So all of the materials that we're purchasing towards that really work towards the end of bettering the literacy skills in both reading and writing, but we were finding that we're implementing K two is really supporting that writing instruction as well, so it's been really we've, we've worked a bit, um, but we still have a ways to go, and we're going to really make sure we have our materials in place to support the reading and the growth.
And Sealy is also seeing a very similar percentage, the total numbers here are seeing nineteen percent at tier two, thirty percent. So. And just to highlight, I think that, you know, the broad categories can even, I mean, when you you recall from my presentations, a lot of the software that we are purchasing, where we continue to purchase every year, is, is actually already aligned. So even just having that tag of, of what we're doing for fun, for fun, for wins, uh for work, work, all of that has already been, this is before, I think, we just continue that. Um, I mean, a digital plan, or summary budget, a lot of it recurred, because it's been there, and we continue to grow and, and some of the the, the, the guys who've been making that.
Yeah, I noticed that science of reading is also budgeted for CIA as well as in the individual schools, what's the difference between those budgets?
Uh, a lot of it is, it depends on the professional developments, for instance, the consultant that we bring, that we bring to uh in conducting some of this uh, uh, what we call in the literacy committee in terms of the training, that is something that's kind of coming directly from, from.
Okay.
That's one of the biggest.
Yeah, and the, like, the materials and stuff were more on the school side, okay?
I would extend that, that broadly, we have that conversation every year about, um, you know, what, what do we do? What's curriculum?
Mm-hmm.
Like, what's the ownership of that department versus what goes into the buildings? Um, and, you know, we, we've ebbed and flowed over the years about like those ideas, but have tried to be consistent with that, that the schools kind of order their supplies um related to it, but curriculum has the oversight, they deal with consultancies, they deal with the training, um higher level concepts there.
Okay. Um, in terms of the STEAM curriculum, and I noticed, because we're integrating more AI platforms, we're doing more, more, you know, we're building out this kind of more robust STEAM program. I'm wondering why the tech STEAM budget stayed the same or sort of slightly, I think it was like a slight decrease from the previous year, given that we're sort of trying to, you know, build some new things.
Sure, I can fight Paul Garofano, Director of Tech.
You mentioned it was, it was a brief caveat during the tech, for the technology STEAM budget presentation. The district was donated um some money, and we were able to work with, I was able to work with Brian and the business office to offset some pretty substantial costs um that would have otherwise been purchased through the technology STEAM operating budget. And I think that ties into the second part of the question around AI. Um, Dr. Roscoe and I have been working, you know, hand in hand with other administrators and faculty, and um, you know, I think we have a couple tiers to that, do you want to, Dr. Roscoe, you want to just briefly?
Sure, um, so I think that, I think, well, Dr. Hamilton charges like, you know, this is something that we need to really, really make operational, and so we are looking at this uh twofold. So how is this going to look for teaching and how is this going to look for learning, right? And so with that, we have started, we, we are starting our pilot after the break, actually. And we really make, want to make sure that our teachers, uh, we're partnering with teachers to understand how are we going to integrate this into our instruction? But at the same time, we want to build, build those, uh, those feedback loops with students, right? Especially where students who are graduating, who are really going to need these tools in the, or they're already using the tools. Um, so really, I think the goal is to, uh, at least in the, in the short term, for next year is create familiarity and early proficiency to a degree, uh, both at the teaching and learning um at the secondary level, and then really begin the integration um and the exploration of the K five or K six level. Um, I don't know if you want to add something to that?
Yeah, and.
Yes.
Um, built into uh this year's budget or next year's budget, effectively, uh, we are upgrading our subscriptions to Magic School AI to Canva.
Yeah.
And, you know, there are, there are funds allocated because AI is so new, there are going to be things that I'm sure we're unaware, unaware of right now that we want to be prepared for. And I think going back to the original question of those, some of those items that um were otherwise, weren't included in the operating budget per the donation, are the tangibles of providing an infrastructure that supports all of these new tools. For example, um, a portion of the donated money is paying to upgrade our core server,
Right.
which is located here at the high school, to upgrade all the wireless access points um on this campus. And um, you know, that's something that fortunately we kind of take for granted because it's a pretty robust and reliable system, but it's really the backbone of providing access to, you know, all these new platforms, AI at the top of that list.
Always with something to add, I'll add that, um, I think to speak specifically to the reduction.
Yeah.
Um, in the current year's budget, this is our last year of a lease payment we had with BOSI's um for purchases, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So we had, it's called a installment purchase agreement that we had previously established with BOSI's, and I believe the most recent one is paying Promethean panels.
Correct, majority, yeah.
So we, over um three-year period.
I.
Three-year, four-year period, we basically paid off the installation of Promethean panels to be installed in all classrooms in one shot. So every classroom had access to the same uh materials. By being able to allocate some of these donated funds to that, we were able to not reissue uh a new um installment purchase agreement with BOSI's, which would have created additional debt each year going forward. Um, the items that Paul just spoke to, core server, wireless access points are things we would have put in there, um ultimately would have paid interest on, um and then had a carrying cost in the next few years, which we're really trying to avoid, as we know we have additional debt service coming on the books. And so that reduction, um, the fact that they're flat, flat in absence of that, that.
Got it, okay, that makes a lot of sense.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Um, I think I just have maybe two more questions. So our third district goal was really centered on not only social emotional learning, but also sort of promoting and addressing mental health for our children. Um, what portion of our budget's allocated to kind of student mental health services and counseling and wellness?
Sure, uh, so again, tough one. To be fully transparent, to be able to provide that, I got to go with deeper, and I would say for this reason, we've always been consistent in our messaging that SEL is not something that in itself um works in isolation. So we also don't budget for it in isolation, it's something that's embedded across the curriculum. So um the expenses associated with mental health awareness are probably present everywhere um in some line, however, if we look specifically at the line items that are categorized by state for that purpose, counselors, psychologist, um, we can get a percentage, which I did calculate for you, I'm just going to find it here. It's in here, but. So let, let me, if I can jump to the next one, when somebody else is answering, I'll come back to that.
Sure.
Um, but understand that that, that figure itself represents a portion of it, but in the broad category of these are the expenses for personnel and the related items associated with it, but doesn't speak to the fact that, um, and I'm thinking as an example, that the health program at the high school um includes consultants who come in and, and who do engage with students in that way. Uh, we'd have to disaggregate each line to pull out each, each number to get to that total cost.
Um, should I go on or do you want to?
Please, yeah.
Okay.
I'll find time to jump back in.
Um, and I, because this is my first budget cycle, I guess I had a question about, a little bit about process. Are there opportunities for community um members to provide input or feedback on the proposed budget before the final approval?
Sure, so first and foremost, easiest way, um, last slide from our presentation, please email all of us. So really, everyone here at the dais of Dr. Hamilton, um, at khamilton@edgemont.org can submit direct questions to him, to me at bpaul@edgemont.org, or to the broader board of ed, email boe@edgemont.org. Um, the next steps in the process, so after tonight's budget work session, of course, we'll take any feedback from the board, make any requested um changes or amendments if necessary. Um, our hope would be to present to you both the um administrative budget packaged um and the contingency budget I spoke of earlier at the April twenty-second meeting. Um, the board would then take action on that being um an adopted budget. Um, post the adopted budget, there is a community forum that by state law is required to be held within a certain time period before the vote. Opportunity for, um, again, public to weigh in on that. Uh, the purpose of a lot of that is, is really to understand and unpack um what is being voted on, not necessarily the changes, because it's already been adopted at that time, at that dollar amount. In addition, we've um, through partnership, working with ECC, um, and I know Dylan Pine is, is a representative for ECC, is, is offered um to coordinate with the uh PTA and PTSA's uh to try to create an additional forum like we've done in the past. Um, more likely than not to be a virtual one, uh, where people can come, it'll be Dr. Hamilton, myself. Um, typically, a board member, um, often the one who is a liaison for ECC um would join to provide an alternate avenue um for that type of conversation as well.
Okay, great.
Don't have a date yet, we're waiting on. Don't have a date yet, we're waiting on um coordination.
Is it for you?
All right. I feel like a delinquent, but answered at this point, so we can move on to the next person.
Fair enough. Uh, that will be you, Noreen.
I'm I'm not going to answer as, I mean, ask as many questions. I know I emailed you a bunch, but we could talk about things later, but. I think one of the things I didn't notice in the budget was um about the universal pre-K program. I know that we gave to. Approval for a feasibility study. Can you just give us some update on that or whether or not there's a contingency plan for that?
Great, so um as as discussed previously, so the state is um allocating as part of the governor's proposal. Um, funds for the district to operate a UPK program, so universal pre-K services. Um, we've discussed that we don't have the space um to be able to bring that in-house. Um, and at the board's um authorization, we were authorized to put an RFP, a request for proposals out to all the local. Um, providers who may be able to provide such services. The RFP is written, um, to be really clear that they they would need to be able to provide the service. At the cost that is um provided by the state, which is a per pupil expenditure. Um, and then for some reason, lost me right now, but I think it's six thousand or eight thousand dollars, whatever it was for for each individual.
Four hundred, I think.
Say it again.
I think it's fifty four hundred.
Perfect, right? That that sounds more correct to me. Um, we sent that RFP out to thirteen uh local providers. There's no, it doesn't have to be in Edgemont. Um, the legislation basically says it could be anywhere in the surrounding area, provided it doesn't cause an undue harm to parents. To transport their students to do so. So we tried to use kind of the broader Greenberg, Scarsdale, um, North New Rochelle area. As our um catchall and identified thirteen um providers that are either. Um, organizationally based, not home based, not a not a individuals home. Um, or have provided services at other school districts like the YMCA um or otherwise. Um, the response date, I believe, is April eleventh, if I'm if I'm correct, so we're coming up on it right now. We have not received a proposal yet. Um, I did get a call today, but one looking for clarification um on what would be required. I don't know if they'll submit or not. Um, I received um an email communication from one other group indicating that they did have a desire to. Um, put a proposal in, but we're asking whether we had the space for them to run it onsite. Um, which would be a typical way that this specific organization would do it. Come into your school, we'll provide the staffing, but you got to give us the space um to make it work. Um, and then I did speak um with representatives from the Greenville um Community Church Nursery School as well. Um, and I I don't, I don't know the status of what they will submit or will not submit, but we did talk a lot about, um, I did a site visit. And we talked about logistics, about what are some of the challenges that um are in play? That would potentially lead to an inability to present um a proposal. And so I think we're in a wait and see right now. Um, if we don't have a successful proposal for that, we at the direction of the board, we don't have a a universal pre-K program to run next year. We don't have a provider and we don't have the space um or resources allocated in the budget to do it otherwise. Um, so we are hopeful that that we will get some successful proposals. It doesn't have to be for the whole, it could be one class. Somebody can support one class of eighteen students and we might be able to do a lottery for eighteen students.
Yeah.
Um, but we'll we'll have to wait and see.
I'm sorry, can I just tack on a question to that one? Um, transportation, assuming that the program is, let's say, I'm just, you know, fifteen minutes away.
Yep.
I assume there would be no transportation provided by the district or by the other provider, most likely.
Uh, by New York State law, transportation is for kindergarten through uh twelfth grade students that meet whatever metrics are. Um, not not pre-kindergarten, so absent of Edgemont's um lack of local transportation. Um, it's not something that New York State um has as part of their legislation as well.
Um, so in the spirit of District Two, the District um Goal Number Two. Um, in terms of enhancing our collaborative efforts with our various stakeholders, I was wondering if there's. Anything in this budget that would allow for um enhanced engagement between, yeah, our teachers and parents? In terms of like perhaps adding a second parent teacher conference later on in the year or perhaps having, you know, progress reports available for next school year. Especially at the elementary level.
Um, I'll take that one. Um, I think the, an additional parent teacher conference would have to be negotiated, obviously. Um, so there is no budgetary line item in this proposed budget. That anticipates negotiating that in the twenty five, twenty six school year.
Okay.
Um, in terms of an additional reporting cycle, I think that's reasonable.
Okay.
Uh, and that is something that we have been talking about, increasing opportunities. To provide more consistent, regular feedback to parents on how well students are doing. Which is what the standard space report card was designed to do. So we've been talking about how we could modify that even further to increase the frequency of that kind of communication.
That's great to hear, thank you. Um, I have a question for Paul. Have we considered perhaps?
Oh, you have a question for Ryan that perhaps Paul.
Okay, sorry, no, we, I mean, he's here.
Protocols are protocols.
I respect that. Um, so I see here that we we were that, um, it's like somewhere in the round of twenty four hundred Chromebooks. That we we uh offer to our students. Um, have we ever looked at perhaps looking at other types of devices? Uh, perhaps MacBooks for our students? And what kind of what kind of impact? Would that have on the budget?
Brian, you can take this.
Yeah.
Um, just a correction, the twenty four, the the number of twenty four that I believe I mentioned in my budget presentation, that's students and staff.
Okay.
Yeah, collectively, and we do have, as Jonathan will tell you, we have a number of devices that we keep in our department for now. All of the AP testing is online and a lot of our upperclassmen have their own devices, so. The the number, yeah, the number is usually between twenty four and twenty five hundred. That being said, um, in my tenure in Edgemont. Um, we started out with PC laptops and we migrated, I think you'll find most school districts employ. Chromebooks for students, um, and for teachers for that matter. And there's a couple of reasons for that. One is um monetary, they're cost effective. I think we pay about three hundred and seventy five dollars per device for an eight gig. Which is a pretty robust device for a student or for a teacher. And for the the purposes that most of our students use them, it's web based. We've migrated all of our software to the web. Um, the the specific classes where we do use PCs are our STEAM classrooms. Because they have specific technology that they need, the Windows devices. In our art rooms, we do have Mac devices because that is specific to that technology. So that being said, are you asking, have we considered buying MacBooks to replace Chromebooks? Um, we've considered it, but I think it would be a huge strain on the operating budget for uh technology. And I don't think for all intensive purposes of how we use the devices that um it would far exceed what we are, most of our students need.
Okay.
And the and the other thing to just to add on to that, having gone through this several times. Uh, Apple does not negotiate their price for their devices, whether you're buying ten or ten thousand. Or whether you're a school or a church, their price is their price and it makes it very difficult. To put one against the other when, you know, the company does not incentivize schools to make that transition.
Yeah, they're also very expensive to repair, as Jonathan will tell you, he repairs um all of our devices from Windows to Macs and Chromebooks. The Macs, if they can be repaired, are very costly. And um, we do find that a number of our students tend to break their devices. So fixing a Chromebook compared to an Apple device or even a Windows device is is more cost effective.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I have a follow up on that too. Is it also the case that, is it also the case that some? Web based software does not run well on Apple devices? Is that something you've found with?
No, in our experience, if it's web based and the device has a sufficient web browser, Safari or Chrome or the like. It it's a level playing field.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, Chris?
All right, Grace. Hi, um, okay, don't kill me, I'm gonna, I'm bringing back, bringing us back to the science of reading just for a little bit. Simply because, you know, across um multiple departments, we're investing significant dollars. And I think it would just be helpful for people to really understand. The delta between where we were and what the science of reading is offering the district now, right? Just to give us this, because I think we've all kind of seen this, the um slides around the pillars of science reading and all the components that are important, but. Why was it, you know, why was it initiated, I think, at the state level, right? From what I understand through um all the presentations over the last two years. And where were we before this and what kind of value is this offering our students that wasn't really available before? So I don't know who I'm asking that question to, looking at everybody.
I can start and and I'll jump in guys, so. Um, so I just want to make sure, like a a brief sort of like overview in terms of what is it? Like, everybody keeps talking about this and and I think there's three things that we need to consider when talking about science of reading. It's evidence based, um, it's it's decades of research, it's not something that they just sprang. It's something that's been accumulating uh from cognitive science, from linguistics, from um educational, all the all these fields. And they basically landed into this explicit systematic instruction of reading, that's what it is. And they landed and landed on six components that really make the overall body of of research, which is like uh for literacy. Uh, oral oral language development, phonemic phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency and vocabulary. And then, oh, sorry, comprehension, six. Um, and then I think, like I mentioned, in terms of like the systematic approach to it. Where it was, what was happening before is there were a lot of different uh empirical ways of trying to address. Uh, you know, when students need intervention and we we talked a little briefly about that intervention. Um, but I think now is like, the reason why they're saying this is evidence based, scientific evidence based. Is because we, there's several studies where they they have, they have evidence that it actually improves literacy. If you actually have a a a systematic approach to how to how to teach to read. And and therefore also how to intervene when something's not not clicking. Um, especially for kids who may be at risk. So we're talking about a population who needs specific support, tier two, tier three, special education. Um, and so I think that is an overall in terms of understanding where is it coming from? And this this started a few years ago and I think um. There were a a few programs that were just not not fully integrated into that. Like especially when it comes down, it it came down to phonics, it was a lot of it was an assumption that, oh, well, this is being taught when when literacy has been uh given, so. I don't know if you, I don't want to put you in the spotlight, but I don't know if you want to uh 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 add anything?
We had this foundation a a bunch of years ago to respond to the phonics need, a systematic and explosive program. Found that it was, it was uh necessary but not sufficient, so we layered on a hegemony program. To respond to the need of awareness, the need of those needs for students. But what we found through, through the the need for students to intentionally practice what they're learning in these programs. So that they're not silenced, but that they're sort of embedded throughout their days, we needed to add a significant amount of material to really have them. Students be able to intentionally practice, and when they're not, they go through materials quite quickly, so. In order to make um their work, their work have to help them learn, frankly. Um, and we've also spent a great deal of money over the years, just in terms of how we've changed the professional development that we're offering. Because it wasn't simply adding, um, the practice of the understanding practices that we had from each higher level to change in order to respond to the research. So it's been slowly layering on materials and um. And training for the faculty to really embrace the changes that need to be made and to use the materials effectively. And to all along, make sure we're inventorying those materials and we're using the data to order for what we really need to support the students.
The other thing that kind of, I'm sorry, go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, considering the question of like, you know, where the district was prior to this. Um, you know, in addition to the foundations and the hegemony, we also have words their way. Um, which is like specific responsive and adaptive word study. So continuing with that investment in the second, six, as Dr. Roscoe stated. We'll continue to flesh that out and really complete the picture of um reading instruction across the cases.
And across the tiers, because the materials that are interventionists are using, they're using, you know, to to make to provide that difference in programs.
No, that's very helpful.
And a more basic level, um, so several years ago, Teachers College put out a model, the TC model, Lucy Cawthon's model. Um, that everybody jumped on because it was the the panacea for helping kids to become better readers. And what became true over the years is that it really did not close gaps. Between students who were demonstrating proficiency on state assessments, because it was not. Closing gaps for students who did not have exposure or was or students who had difficulty with phonemic awareness. Because that was a major part of what the program omitted. So what a lot of districts did was they started to augment the teachers college model by bringing integrity and other kinds of programs. To supplement what was missing from the teachers college model. What we now know is this evidence approach, evidence based approach now works for all students. And there has been longitudinal studies to indicate that this science of reading approach works for students, whether they've had exposure or not. And you're not continuing to perpetuate these gaps in literacy skills. Because you're getting the phonemic awareness that many students were not getting and it exposes them to to writing. So it's really broadening the definition of literacy to include reading, writing, viewing, listening and speaking. So all five components of what it means to be literate and the TC model missed a lot of that.
Okay, that's really helpful, thank you. Um, okay, I think just two more questions. Um, I also noticed a, you know, a significant ongoing investment in Panorama. It, I didn't realize that was through BOSI's, actually, that was new for me as I was going through the materials, but. Again, not sure who I'm directing this question to, just wanting to get a sense for what the perceived benefit has been to the district, how it's being applied. I know when it was first introduced a couple of years ago, it was going to be staged, so also just staged in terms of its rollout. So just, you know, curious as to where we are um and what value it's adding.
Yeah, sure, so at this juncture, I think uh. Uh, they have been doing it for a couple of years and we intend to do, continue to do so. I think one of the main uh, the main benefits of using Panorama, and this is how they started actually, companies. The climate surveys that actually allows you to specifically target what you want to learn from. How your students are feeling in terms of belonging, in terms of climate. Um, and so we are actually planning that uh administration in the fall. So really has has been fundamental in understanding our students' needs as it relates to social emotional learning. Um, it also, you know, helps has helped us u utilize that data to inform decisions. So for instance, some of the um, some of the initiatives that are happening currently, so for instance, responding uh 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 RP.
RTI.
Art, no, not RTI, um, uh, restorative practice, I'm like RP, restorative practice, I actually, I wanted to. I don't know if Kyle wants to, you know, talk a little bit more about how we're using it, but essentially looking at, oh. This is where we are, um, has helped, uh, at least in in the short term. You utilize that data for for instructional decisions too.
I'd be very curious.
And one of the challenges, while Kyle is making his way up, one of the challenges that we have had is um. Getting all of our data to interact with Panorama. So that we did not need to have this reliance on walking with one foot in Panorama and one foot on other student management systems. And so we finally kind of worked through that that hurdle, the high school has implemented its its surveys and has that information. And that has kind of informed the PD that you you saw it. Two, three, four court meetings ago around restorative practices, the elementary schools are working on. Integrating that data in a more systematic way so that that SEL and the additional supports. Can be derived from Panorama directly and reduce this reliance on two platforms.
And is when you're referencing elementary, are you talking about, is that Sanford Harmony data? It is, okay.
Yes.
Dr. Hamilton, I think you just referenced the most important part, which is that uh in the twenty three, twenty four school year at the junior senior high school. Our big piece of Panorama was to administer the student surveys. And specifically, we are now looking uh at school belonging. So when we talk about the speak up work that our teachers engaged in on the superintendent's conference day or at faculty meetings. Or the student. or at faculty meetings or the student meetings, that's a byproduct of recognizing that we want to strengthen school belonging. Restorative practices really were a byproduct of the student survey. So all of that data is driving the work that we're doing, both at um professional learning, faculty meetings. And I think you could see a theme through all the work that we've done this year stems back to the data we collect collected from those surveys.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kyle.
Um, my last question, I think, is going back to Dr. Willsco again. Um, just curious. I know that last year, um, you are not here yet, but there was talk of developing the health curriculum further down earlier in the student life cycle into the elementary school. And I noted that in the next year's budget, there doesn't seem to be activity there. So I was just curious if that was still on the radar and took the thoughts over there.
Yes, sorry. Um, so as you know, there are a co- a a, you know, quite a few priorities in terms of like closing the loops, as I mentioned, uh, as I presented earlier. Um, so we had the report card, the sources study, the the curriculum maps. Uh, we're still finishing up with the report cards as well for K five. And so one of the main reasons that you don't see that in the curriculum, it's not only in the budgets, because we actually are in the process of analyze, the the materials were bought. So just want to make sure that we are, you know, we have the materials. So now it is, it it it's it's up to us to really analyze this and see how it's going to be integrated. But um, so it's there. Um, it's just that we continue to have conversations about these topics. Um. I want to make sure that, again, like there's so many things that were happening at the same time and so many competing interests, but we do have it. That's that's one of the reasons why it was not included, uh, but it's 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 in the to do list for sure.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. All right.
Jennifer, could I just jump in? I think um go go back to Ami's question. I have a response, sorry to interject. So uh, the question was specifically about um what portion of the budget is allocated to uh mental health awareness, mental health services, counseling, et cetera. So I already spoke to the indirect costs that are harder to tie out, but direct costs for expenses for counselors, psychologists and the related expenses in their budget lines equates to about three million dollars. So that's about four percent of the overall budget.
Thank you. Uh, Nalish.
Yeah, so I don't have a very kind of a specific question in the budget line items. I think you've kind of given us a lot of deep dive into specific cuts in particularly, so thank you for that. I have a very generic questions. Uh, I'm just in a state of shock in terms of how bad the economic and political development we are into suddenly in the last two months. And it makes me wonder uh on the some of the risk and stress factors I see on both the expense side and the revenue side. And uh, I'm, while we know that we had a very comfortable results, we have like kind of a cushion on the numbers that we have. I'm just very keen to hear if these things were to continue, like, is there anything that we need to do more in our current budget? I'm very delighted to hear that you're making some provision for the risk to the federal kind of uh uh support that comes to us. But is there anything more that we can do? Like, it's it's very disturbing to me at the very macro level and a fabulous job on the budget, but I'm just.
No, I very much appreciate that. I think it's the same concerns um any business official has, or it is. Um, we we get to make a budget that's typically developed between December and February for the following year. It's got to last you through June of that year. And um to speak specifically to the revenue side, there's so much unpredictable, there's so much unpredictability of of what may happen um specifically as it relates to interest on investments, which is one of the large areas where we have um for the last several years been really fortunate. Go back three, four years ago, we we were earning close to zero on our investments. And so um you look, we're we're budgeting for over a million dollars in interest investments this year. Um, that represents risk right there. Um, I will say that I think all of the numbers on the revenue side are are relatively conservative. State aid is going to be what state aid is, right? So once the the legislative budget is approved, we have to assume it's going to come in in whole. Um, we've already spoken about the protection against some of the federal um aids that we do receive. Um, tuition from individuals certainly could change, but um generally, I think we've we've budgeted a contingency on the tuition lines on the revenue side for a non-returning student, just like we also look for contingencies on the appropriation side for possible additional students that need to be placed out of the district. Rentals of property, we we've been really consistent with over the last several years since we've made a structural change as to how um we invoice for the use of our space, very much to the betterment of the district. Um, it looks like we're actually going to bring in close to two hundred thousand this year, and so we may be conservatively low again um on that estimate. Um, I think the one area where we have the greatest influence, and I I can share, this is a common conversation amongst school business officials locally. Everybody has always underrepresented or um underprojected, for lack of a better term, what interest earnings may be, because you just don't know. Um, it could quickly turn the other way. With three consecutive years like this, every one of us has been challenged to um make that a little bit closer or a little less um protective of of the district in that way, because we keep generating revenues that are in great excess of what was projected at that time. And so as we try to marry the expenditures and the revenues and what we project and what actually occurs, I think we've all been challenged to raise that. Um, there are two things in play for us that I think are important to recognize on that front. Um, one, because of our considerable reserves, we have more money invested, which in turn is yielding um much more for us. It happens to be at a very uh fortunate time, given the interest rates. We, on average, are investing thirty-five million dollars a month. And it it comes in big swings because we get tax payments in lump sum from the town of Greenberg, and then we have a huge pot of money that then um slowly works its way down with salary payments and payroll um obligations in time. Um, but if you look at it on the aggregate, we're that on average, we're investing thirty-five million. The calculation that we've um used to generate our projected revenue for next year is is using a very conservative three percent interest rate. Um, in fact, we have opportunities right now. We have a six-month CD that is going to come due uh May first. That between now and then, we have opportunities to roll it into another six or twelve month um CD at a fixed rate that's far above three percent, that we can guarantee um interest earnings on at that point. Um, current rates for us on most of our investments are in the low fours, between four point one five and four point two five percent. And um maybe in a positive way, have not actually changed much at all uh since the start of this year uh with the volatility. I would expect that with the uncertainty that's occurring now uh in the global financial markets, we we it would be silly to assume, to not assume that some change will eventually come due. Uh, we will continue to look at ways to invest it and lock it into interest rates where we can predict um the amount coming in. Um, and in fact, because of where some of our reserves are, we can, we can lock up a a pretty considerable amount in a fixed rate um that we can say accounts for fifty percent of or forty percent of the anticipated earnings to protect us. In each of those cases where we can choose six-month and twelve-month CDs, the rate is typically lower than what we're we're getting on our daily yields. Um, but that's part of our way of diversifying and saying we're willing to take a twenty-five uh basis point reduction on it to ensure that we get it for six months and it takes out any of the volatility that may come our way. To that end, um, we we don't know, right? It it could turn on a dime and and we could have a material change. And I think that goes back to my previous responses. How would we um account for this? Well, we'd have to marry expenditures with the revenues coming in, and maybe it means we would have to slow down on expenditures um next year if we saw that trend happening, um or choose to appropriate unrestricted fund balance, um, you know, along the way. Um, but we've, we've been very fortunate, and and this this speaks to, I think, some of the questions about expenditures versus budget. Fortunate may be the wrong word. Um, we've had several unfilled positions for periods of time over the course of the year, which considerably reduced payroll. We've had um unrealized contingent positions, which considerably reduces the overall payroll. Um, when we start to get into the school year, we can balance by looking at that fund balance projection to see even if revenues are short, can we make expenditures match?
Thank you. And my last question would be, so given that the, you know, everything is just on the inflation side. So everything seems very inflationary at this point of time, which is artificially kind of kind of triggered by this political climate. What are the uh uh, what are the risks that we have on some of our capital expenditure items? So I know we are making a provision for one point one million dollar for capital expenditure. Um, if things were to not come to a contract, then we are going to push it out, we'll have to execute it or or the bond work that will happen, just some context on.
Yeah.
Just the inflation on the construction and the consumables.
Sure. So we've, we we have some um evidence of that in in bid responses. Some at our next meeting, we'll be hopefully presenting to the board um bids that we would hope to be awarded for the EHS cafeteria project. Not surprisingly, as we had discussed before, there are elements of that project that are likely to be affected by um the the global markets. Um, and in particular, um, the additional expenses related to steel and and procuring items that are manufactured in other countries in many cases. Um, and so we are absolutely cognizant of that. And so uh part of the reason why we've chosen to continue the paving project um as that transfer to capital um and the same thing is occurring in the current year with the budget. Um, we are doing it in phases, and the phases do not have a defined scope of work. But instead, um, what the budget is will dictate how much of that project can be accomplished at that time. So as an example, last year at this time, we had um put a transfer to capital for roughly three hundred thousand dollars to begin that paving project. At the time, cost estimates suggested that we would be able to carry out a much larger portion of that parking lot than we are going to likely be able to do. Now that we have uh more realistic costs tied to when the project would commence, which is this June, uh, we now know that we can do a much smaller part of that project. And in the bids, we put out opportunities on a um perp um linear foot basis. So if the bids come in below the budget, we can accept more that allow us to go further. Um, and we do the same for next year as well. Um, so the scope, the the what we accomplish with the project will be very bid dependent, but it will not restrict us from being able to accept um or have to punt to another year.
And this is not a question on this, but in one of the presentation on the budget, you talked about the bond repayment schedule and the bond borrowing schedule, which will create a big step up. And I know this is a fantastic budget this year, but can just throw some light so people have this movement to prepare, hey, you know, there is something which we have to worry next.
Thank you. Again, perfect. Um, I think always take every opportunity to talk about this, because if I look at, um, I intentionally didn't answer the first question about what what are the the, you know, big priorities in the budget? Because I'm going to look at it from a different perspective. So the perspective for me is uh multi-year um success in in having budget budgets work for the district. Um, so the number one thing that is constantly on our radar is the debt service uh implications of the capital bond. So we've uh been authorized to use sixty-two million dollars um of funding to support the bond. Uh, we've issued twelve million dollars of those bonds to date for phase one, which means we still have fifty million dollars of debt that is going to come onto the books in the next two years, if everything works out um as planned. So this first issuance has led to about a million dollars of additional debt service next year. Um, but if you just extrapolate that out, if rates are to stay similar and and over the same period of time, um, we we've got almost four and a half times that um coming to us over the next two years. We've spoken several times um in finance committee, in small committee groups, and also publicly about the need for us to utilize the reserves that we have available in order to be able to present to the community um a budget that is um um in line with expectations. Um, so if we were to not plan to appropriate uh considerable amounts from our reserves in each of the next two budgets, so twenty-six, seven and twenty-seven, eight, uh, we would be looking at 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 really considerable jumps in the tax levy increase because all of these debt service payments are exclusions on the tax gap. So for every additional dollar of debt service, we can actually raise the levy by that amount. Um, that is not, uh, that has not been the direction or the intention of the finance committee um as we've discussed. And so I I think, you know, one of the documents that you will see in in the additional um information I gave you today, um, which many may have seen through other iterations of that, are some calculators that we were using in the finance committee to look at um how much, what what sum of money may we need to appropriate from our reserves over the next two years to meet some arbitrary goal? A tax uh levy increase of three and a half percent or whatever that may be. Um, and I think as of today, although highly variable and contingent upon many things, I would estimate that we would need to appropriate about two point one million dollars of those reserves over the next two years in order to present a budget that is more in line with what the community expectation is. Um, I think we are well positioned for that. Um, I think we we know we are um really well reserved at this point in time. Um, and this has been what we have been preparing for to be able to do that um for several years.
Thank you.
And very well preparing for. I mean, it's it's really um thank you for being so foresighted in terms of developing reserves, because, I mean, we knew this was coming, but um it will smooth things a lot, I think. As the hour gets later, people will be very happy to hear that uh all except for one of my questions was basically covered. And the one question I have is actually the flip side of one of the ones Nalish asked. You talked about the revenue side based on the uncertainty of the economic environment. Um, and I was wondering if there's anything you think needs a second look on the expenditure side? Now salaries are contractual, benefits for the most part, the rates are dictated to us and they're locked in, but excuse me, like facilities budgets, transportation.
Yeah, uh, I, perfect question. It speaks to the idea that when we're often building this a few months ago. And so um, you know, it's easy to move on, you know, we've got that part of the budget and let's go on to the next. And so reflecting back upon that is is really important. Um, and I would kind of echo one of the things Nalish points out is uh there there's some risk in there. Um, I'll point out one area that that I believe does have some risk, and then I'll explain why I at least personally feel comfortable with where it is, knowing that we have contingent funds and opportunities to utilize reserves next year to um to offset any additional expenses. So transportation is is the first one that would come to mind. Um, in your uh the new packet I gave you today, there is an updated transportation sheet. Um, and I I give you an updated one for two reasons. So when we last made our presentation, it was still prior to April first. Um, the the state determined date upon which all um families who are requesting transportation services to private schools um that they provide that information to the school is April first. Now, that is intended to be for budget purposes, so we can develop our budget. All the business officials wished it was March first or something before we start making our presentations. However, if you look at that, um, there are a couple of trends, I think, that are worth noting that do directly relate to some of that risk. So the first that you'll see is next year, uh, and this was actually discussed earlier tonight, um, we are projected to transport a hundred and seven students. That is um eighty-seven students to private schools, um thirteen to out of district pri- uh special education placements made by the district, and seven students to our half-day occupational education program at BOCES, where they do a half-day program at EHS and a half-day um onsite at BOCES. So that hundred and seven is is obviously the largest, right? I've given you, uh, you know, twenty years of data there. And we've seen the trend increase post-COVID um from seventy-five, sixty-seven, seventy-five, eighty-eight, ninety-seven and a hundred and seven projected next year. So I think it would be easy to say this, if you look, how how can we be presenting an expenditure per student which um is shown here of ten thousand two hundred and fifty-four, where in the current year, our estimated expenses are eleven thousand nine twenty? Um, and I would say this, there's a couple of areas there. So one is, in addition of a student does not have a one-to-one correspondence with the cost. For example, another student joining a bus that is solely Edgemont students heading to the same private school doesn't create an additional expense. We're paying for the bus, uh, not the student in that case. Um, and so we do actually have, uh, where we're seeing the increase in private school placements, they are grouped in um a couple of programs, a couple of schools that we are already sending many students to now. Um, and in most cases, they're ones where we are paying almost the whole or the whole cost of that bus. We have enough students going there that we actually route the bus just from Edgemont. We don't pick up students in other um districts as part of the consortium. And so it 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 doesn't necessarily mean that each student will come with that additional cost of X thousand dollars to that. Um, the other area is, and and I'll be quite frank, I think in terms of simplicity of the budget, we've, we've made a presentation to you. Do I believe these changes are enough for me to say we should open that up, make a different presentation? I don't. I think that there are some the contingent funds that have been aforementioned and and opportunities for us to address it if emerging needs do come up. Um, it doesn't mean, um, you know, is it likely that that budget line specifically may go over budget? Possibly. But I I believe on the whole, in the aggregate, um, we we're well positioned for that.
All right. Thank you. So has the uh discussion raised any follow-up questions among anyone, among anyone else? All right. Oh, okay. You mentioned at the beginning, or not you, I think Dr. Hamilton, you mentioned at the beginning what our top priorities are. Maybe a controversial question, but what sort of falls to the bottom where if we see that we don't have the funds for it, what sort of stuff gets left behind?
So I uh, I I wouldn't speak for all without us. Um, um, so we actually, so it's interesting. So we don't, our our approach to the budget defense doesn't um seek uh the lowest common denominator. We tend to go for, what's the exciting part of that, and what can you justify to explain the excitement there? So, of course, there are some things that would have a lower priority up to that.
Or does it just get covered by reserves?
Possibly. But I do believe that there's an activity that, you know, if necessitated, we would have to go through. And I think, you know, of course, it starts with what are our mandates? So, what are state mandates or or special education mandates or? And then secondly, what are our contractual obligations? And we can kind of work our way down through the buckets, and that's going to leave us with a relatively small pool where we could make those informed decisions. I think the activity that I'll be going through over the next week or so with a contingency budget will already kind of lead to that, is that items deemed to be contingent could could be the ones that were first targeted. But I think that 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 would be a true, almost a second round of collaborative activities we'd have to go through to do.
Yeah, and I think it just reiterates again how much of the budget is actually like sort of set.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Good question.
Jennifer, there are no other questions. I do have a few areas I just, I would want to make sure I would backfill a couple of areas I wanted to bring up if they didn't come up via questions, if that's okay.
No, absolutely. Everyone's
One is the the annual conversation as it relates to health costs and health insurance. And I just want to take a look at that line item, because it is a really big one, and it has changed in a material way. So, first and foremost, so we are a member of Swiss chip. Swiss chip is the Southern Westchester Cooperative Health Insurance Program. That is one of the programs that that school districts subscribe to. The other common one is called NISHIP, which is actually a state-funded program that many schools and other public entities are a part of. We typically use that as as we are a component member of Swiss chip, and I'm the representative for Edgemont. That's the comparison we tend to use. The composite rate increase under Swiss chip for the health premiums for next year is eight point nine percent. So, if we just think of it this way, that if every individual in the district maintained the exact same health coverage, and we had no changes in personnel, we would expect that our costs and health insurance would rise by approximately nine percent as a district. So, that that's the easiest part of that. The second part that comes into play as we look at the health insurance increases, so why don't we see a direct nine percent increase from expenditure to budget? Is, as when we have retirees, it increases the number of people that we are now covering. So, if I retire from the district, the district has a post-employment obligation to me to provide the health insurance. But you're going to replace me, and my replacement is also going to be getting health insurance. And so, absent people exiting from our health program due to death, we, the total number of individuals that we cover will increase each year with any additional resignation or retirement that that includes that. So, each year, we are carrying more individuals in addition to that nine percent increase. The third factor that I think is important to note is that just whenever we make a contingency personnel decision, so as an example, the teachers. We had had two in there. We've already given one to the Sealy Place. We have to also embed in the budget contingent expenses related to their fringe benefits. When we do so, we are very conservative in that approach. We assume that that individual is going to come to us with the need for family health insurance, which is the highest premium of the groups, protecting the district on, you know, what they may come into, to make sure that we have the funds allocated. So, for each contingency position, there is a contingency health insurance cost as well. When those contingencies are not materialized, which has been the case for the last two years in most instances, that leaves additional surplus funds on that line that become unexpended due to the fact that the position didn't exist. And then lastly, we also bet additional contingencies for changes in premium. For example, an individual who's currently covered under individual health insurance may become married or or identify a domestic partner, and now they've moved into two-person, and that significantly increases the cost. Similarly, a two-person insurance may move to family upon the birth of a child. And so, we always do embed some, although far less this year than I have in the past, flexibility, almost like lane changes for salaries, for premium changes that may occur within the year. I did do an analysis this year to really look at how often was it that the total number changed? And it was less than I think we were assuming in the past. Think in the past, I was looking more upon like who changed in an upward trajectory as opposed to there are also some that went from family to two-person, and there are some that went from two-person to single. And so, the overall wash over the last few years has been smaller, and so we we put a far smaller contingency in the budget this year. In your additional packet I gave you today, I did give you a rate comparison chart between NISHIP and Swiss chip, so that you can see, Swiss chip's rates are lower than NISHIP on the whole currently, and their percent increase year-over-year for the last three years has also been lower. And then lastly, a conversation came last time we met about self-insured. And is there a benefit to the district exploring a self-insured model? So, I'm going to preface it the same way Anthony did with transportation. The primary thing in play is this, is that the program upon we are, that we are in is contractually negotiated. So, any change to the program would require us to first be doing so through our bargaining units. Absent that, I did reach out to our neighboring school district, so my counterpart at Scarsdale. And he shared with me, because Scarsdale is self-insured, a presentation that they gave to the public on March first, which was like their annual presentation on the status of their self-insured plan. There are a few takeaways that that you can glean from that. They report approximately, I believe it to be, let me make sure I get it right. It's not our numbers, it's theirs. I want to be really accurate. Sorry, bear with me. Okay, over a ten-year period, they calculated a ten-year savings of twenty-four million dollars when compared to NISHIP. They're self-funded versus NISHIP. Couple of things to think about for us. We are, they are about two and a half times the size of Edgemont. So, if we were to just break that into two and a half times the save, or cut the savings down proportionally by that, then we're looking at over the same ten-year period, approximately six hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars per year in Edgemont relative size. NISHIP, we know to be more expensive than Swiss chip. We can show ten-year savings there. So, somewhere between zero dollars and that six hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars is where Swiss chip would have landed if they were using that. Additionally, they did present pros and cons that they weigh every every year, and they do ask their committee to analyze these pros and cons to see, does it make sense to continue with this? For pros, they listed that it gives employee flexibility to design the benefits to meet their needs. Whereas under a, the program that we're in, the the insurance is defined by the insurer, and employees then get that insurance. Another pro was lower administrative costs. And lastly, they said costs fluctuate based on actual claims and usage. So, if you have fewer claims, you pay less that year. So, great, I'll flip that to the other side. That also means that when your claims are high, you pay more than what you may have anticipated at that time. Hundred percent. So, risk comes into play. So, other cons they list is less control over the benefits. And the employer takes on the financial risk. So, you're paying employees' claims directly. Did you capture enough in the premiums that were set to be able to offset this? They manage also a separate reserve to help them, not surprisingly, when the years are good. They they use the reserve to then hold for years where they have claims against. I I don't, I don't believe that we have any data to suggest that we should really go deep into this, but if we did, I would say similar to the school lunch program or anything else, this is something that would be a multi-year look, both in terms of feasibility, cost estimations, and then work with our bargaining units. I I am a pretty firm believer that I think Swiss chip provides us, although unfortunately, we've had incredible rate increases, those have been, the increases have been pretty consistent across all of the options for us.
They're also the same in the private sector, I can tell you that.
Correct. That's correct. Right. Exactly.
Do they also hire an administrator for this self-insured plan? Because they're not paying the doctors themselves. So, they're
Yes.
Doing this through Aetna or somebody like that, that specialize.
Yeah, and I don't know who, but they do, they do have
I know Aetna does it through Meritane, but there are other providers as well, but somebody like that.
Hundred percent.
When you say Swiss chip is is more cost-effective than NISHIP, what are you basing that on?
So, the premiums that we pay?
Okay, not this.
Yeah, that should show, unless I, let me see which one you're looking at. Yeah, so if you look at the Swiss chip premium rates, they're across the board with the exception of one, one place, which is the one-person Medicare, their premium rates are lower.
Yeah.
For the district.
I see that. So, wouldn't it depend on what people are selecting and how
Absolutely. And I could share, if we if we apply our, if we go to the health insurance document, and we look at the
You applied it.
Yeah, which ones? Where do, they actually give us that analysis. I believe it is in your packet.
Okay.
So, they apply the individual rates to your members and say, here's what your savings
Yeah.
was under that claim.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions on insurance? Okay, I'll just hit two other quick areas. So, there was a question that came up about a discrepancy on the sales tax revenue sheet, just so you know, there's a corrected version there. It is, it doesn't, it doesn't change anything on the bottom line for this year, but the figures that were in last year, twenty-three, twenty-four, are showing projected costs as opposed to actual. We have the actual costs in there. And then lastly, I think just important to note for for the group, it didn't come up tonight, although Nolesh's question spoke to future years. Just a reminder, in in our current proposal, this is the first year in a long time that we're going out to the community with a tax levy that is below the maximum allowable tax levy. So, the maximum allowable tax levy is one point one million dollars above what we are asking for this year. I think just important to denote that, so it's clear to everybody that we are not accessing the full allowable amount of tax levy to do so, because we are appropriating planned surpluses or assumed surpluses from this year directly to next year's budget, to bridge that gap. And that's it.
Okay. So, one last chance to get any last questions in before we move on to the consent agenda? All right.
All right, you ready for consent?
I am ready for the consent agenda.
All right.
I need to take item I seven out of order.
Yes.
Okay, it is the recommendation of the superintendent that the board approved the following recommendations by consent vote. Personnel items I one through I six, new appointments, leave of absence, nine thirteen examination, student matters J one, the committee recommendation from the Committee on Special Education, and business items K one through K twenty-two, which is approval of budget transfers, authorization for whole harmless agreement, appointment of registrars for the twenty-twenty-five school board election and budget election and budget vote and chair.
May I have a motion? First Grace, Second Josephine. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, that portion of the consent agenda has passed.
Okay, and personnel item number I seven, the appointment of practice for AP exams.
I'm assuming I can just move and not vote, right? I don't have to.
Yes, you can. You can move and abstain.
Yes. Can I have a motion? First, Nolesh, Second, Josephine. All in favor? Okay, that passes with one abstention. And with that, we are done for the evening. Our next business meeting will be Tuesday, April twenty-second at twenty twenty-five. April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, meeting begins at six P M, immediately adjourns to exec, and then comes back to public session here at seven P M. Thank you very much.